Call the meeting to order. Re-convened to open session. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Cruz. Councilmember Mollison. Councilmember Campion. Councilmember Lamson. Mayor Huer.
Do you have anything to report out?
No, the council adjourned and closed session regarding a conference of the city's labor negotiators and real property negotiations. There is no report of action.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T/U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned in webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, May 18th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, May 19th at 9:00 a.m. The city council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Agenda approval additions and/or deletions. Seeing none, move on to presentations. Presentations, Galt Youth Commission and a report to city council. Welcome.
As you may recall, we are high school students that serve two-year terms. This year, we had a diverse team of youth commissioners with solid representations from both high schools. We have two seniors, six juniors, and two freshmen on the commission.
So I guess we can't hear you if I have the mic on.
We don't have a switch on that mic.
I'm going to move the mic over a little bit. There we go. Okay.
This one's working.
Now watch it, it kind of slides.
Don't we restart?
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, city council. My name is Dion Chiviso and I am the current Sergeant of Arms for the Galt Youth Commission.
And I'm Jesus Cuevas, the current Chair of the Galt Youth Commission. Thank you for allowing us to present to you our annual report.
As you may recall, we are high school students that serve two-year terms. This year, we had a diverse team of youth commissioners with solid representations from both high schools. We had two seniors, six juniors, and two freshmen on the commission. Julia and Amanda are serving their second term.
I think the mic will work.
This one?
Yeah. No, it's not. Okay.
The purpose of the Galt Youth Commission is to serve as advocates for the youth of Galt by taking the concerns of the city and community through the youth perspective. As the commission of the city, it is our duty to provide service that is relevant to the betterment of the youth condition in Galt.
During the summer, our commission engaged in a team-building retreat to enhance the connectivity and team dynamic of the commission. This experience was critical to our success. Through this retreat, we came together to set goals and form an action plan and to keep the commission on a steady path towards our goals. We've also had other opportunities for team-building through the generosity of John Durand of the elementary school district as he led us on a few paddle adventures down the Consumnesse River Preserve this year. A team of five of us, along with two adult mentors, also met with the youth leaders from the Sacramento area at the Climate and Sports Student Summit at the Golden One Center. This experience was instrumental in the development of this year's art exhibit.
Hello? Yeah, okay. Our meetings this year presented an opportunity for us to learn, or wait, to become more civically engaged. Every month, we would receive city council updates from Councilmember Lamson, as well as shared news articles from the Galt Herald. However, this year, we really had an opportunity to learn, contribute, and act. For example, Assemblymember Lowe requested that we support his bill ACA-1, which would change the voting age to 17. We had a quite vigorous debate and ended up not taking action. At the beginning of this school year, I expressed my concerns about the unsafe walking routes down Marengo Road to Deputy Director of Public Works, Mr. Clarkson. He came to our meeting and showed us the plans for that dangerous S-turn, as well as future, sorry, as well as future safe routes for the school projects. Finally, Amy Mendez, Economic Development Manager, came to our meeting and shared us with the results of the survey we developed and gave to all high schoolers on their choices of food and retail. She said the results have proven valuable when talking to potential businesses about coming to Galt. A big part of what we do is serve the community. While the weather prevented us from doing our annual pancake breakfast at this year's extravaganza, we supported any booths in need of assistance. We continued our tradition of helping the Rotary at their community dinner. Most recently, at Dia de los Niños event, we had six high schools help paint faces of little ones at the annual library event.
Serving on the youth commission also helped create a unique partnership with the Galt Herald. We met with the editor monthly to pitch story and editorial ideas. The Galt Herald gave us one page every month dedicated to teen issues. We've covered a wide range of topics and didn't shy away from sharing our point of view on controversial subject matters. We really appreciated the opportunity to bring the teen voice to our community. This year, we took on two major projects. One of our commissioners was really concerned about using cellphones while driving. Through a partnership with AT&amp;T, we worked with the Galt High Principal to hold an all-day assembly about the dangers of texting and driving through their It Can Wait campaign. This was an invaluable event planning experience for our commissioners, who worked with AT&amp;T to coordinate the event and figure out the logistics at the school. Of course, our other signature project was the art exhibit, and we'll have a video towards the end of our presentation. It's fair to say that our success would not have been possible without the help of others. We wanted to thank you for supporting the work we do in the community, as well as these other organizations who helped us out along the way. We also want to thank the adult mentors who volunteered endless hours to help us become successful. We just had our last meeting this year and talked about how much this experience has helped us grow as individuals, and we hope to make a difference in the community. Some of us commented about how we really felt like a family. Thank you for this experience.
Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions for us?
Then here's the video.
This year, the art exhibit's focusing a little bit more on preserving the environment. So, in the past, we've done teen perspective, and this year, it's a little bit more about how we can contribute to the health of our world.
The art exhibit is put on by the Galt Youth Commission, and we worked hard for several months to get ready for it. It's an interactive, hands-on exhibit that the whole community has taken part in.
My favorite part of the art exhibit is Joey and his robots.
Definitely the robot, because I love the idea of just being able to portably drive something that can pick up trash instantly. It's very important to recycle, because think of jellyfish or sea turtles. And I'm definitely an underwater aquatic animal fan, because it just pains me to see a duck with a, or a turtle with a plastic bag stuck in its ear, its throat, it's on its head, on its feet, that could drown it.
I think people should take a look at the art exhibit, because it definitely brings the community together.
It's important that we have awareness of living a green life, because the world is the only world that we have, so we need to take care of it the best that we can and make sure that our future generations will have the same opportunities that we do, and better.
Well, thank you. Are both of you continuing next year, or are you?
I will not be.
You will not be? You're tired.
I will be serving my second year.
I look forward to seeing you again. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Galt Area Historical Society, 2017-2018 Community Benefit Funding Grant to the City of Galt.
Mayor Huer, council members. In 2016, the City of Galt, the City Council gave the Galt Area Historical Society a $7,000 of the community grant for that year, and in 2017, we received the entire $10,000 to go towards our project of building an event and learning center that would include our extensive archives at the McFarland Living History Ranch. Our organization has raised almost $700,000 through city and county grants, fundraising, and private donations at this time. This project is the largest and most aggressive project that we've ever undertaken. We should be breaking ground this summer. To date, we have spent almost the $17,000 on the architect engineer of the project, and we are moving into another phase of close to $46,000 with engineering. I have some plans here. These aren't the entire plans. I'll pass them along to you, and you can, if you want to pass them down the line, look at them, so you know that they're embedded in there. That's just an abbreviated version of it. Last week, some of our board members met with our engineer, Mike Smith, from Lodi. We also met with a landscape engineer, an electrical engineer, and a plumbing engineer to go over the plans to finalize, to make sure that we're all in agreement. The next step will be to find contractors to bid this project. These final drawings will be sent to Sacramento County for their final approval. They will be paying, the county will be paying for all the permits, and they'll be walking the permits through for us, so we won't have to get involved in that. Tonight, I'm here to ask the city council to give the Galt Area Historical Society an extension on these two community grants totaling $17,000 for one more year. However, I believe we'll be submitting reimbursement by the end of this year for the $17,000. Another alternative that I'd like to present to you is to allow our two community grants to be modified, to allow them to be used on the architect or engineer. Obviously, a building cannot be built without an architect, so that was our, the first person that you have to have is the architect. It was our oversight not to include this expense on our project when we asked for the grants. Should you allow us to modify both the previous grants, we could submit for reimbursement by, probably by the end of June of this year, if not sooner, because we certainly spent that much of the architect. I know all of you, as we are, are anxious to get this project rolling. We are now seeking a grant writer to try to secure large grants to complete the event and learning center from start to finish, so we won't be delayed. The total cost of the project is approximately $1.6 million. The Galt Area Historical Society thanks you for any consideration that you would give us on this matter, of one of the two alternatives. Thank you. So you can take a look at those if you want.
Thank you. Measure R Independent Citizens Oversight Committee, annual report to city council and to the people. Welcome, Lieutenant.
Thank you. And with me, supporting me this evening, because we clearly have a big crowd, is Ralph Cortez, our Chair of the Measure R Committee, and he'll have some words after I'm done with my brief presentation. First and foremost, we discovered during the auditing of our financial reports that we report to the state, through the state comptroller's office, that we had a third-party vendor report our Measure R funds as being expended on streets, highways, and storm drains, and assure folks that that's not where the funds were expended, and certainly that issue's been resolved with the state in its reporting structure. It apparently occurred in 2015, 2016, and 2017. But nevertheless, Mayor, council members, city clerk, thank you. We're here tonight by, as mandate by the Galt Municipal City Code, Section 3.40.15C, which directs that in part, the Citizens Oversight Committee shall conduct an annual review of the expenditures and revenue collected pursuant to the Measure R ordinance. On April 25th, 2018, the Oversight Committee met at the Police Department to discuss our Fund, excuse me, discuss our Fund 47, which are our Measure R funds for fiscal year 2016 and 2017. The committee was provided the attachments which you were also provided in your packet. Questions were asked and answered, and ultimately, the committee members present voted unanimously to agree that the funds expended, as authorized by the city council action and years prior, were consistent and current with our police expenditure services plan, police services expenditure plan, excuse me. In summary, those funds fund seven police officer positions, two dispatchers, one professional standards officer position, one half of our records clerk position, our graffiti abatement activities that are managed by T.J. Ghadati in the community. And collectively, we had budgeted for last year to spend nearly $1.9 million. We came in under budget. We did use some of our residual funds to the tune of $16,246, leaving us a balance of, excuse me for a moment, $1.245 million, which is about eight, eight and a half months operating expenditures enveloped against our expenditures during that time. So we remain with that $1.25, or excuse me, $1.245 million residual fund in Measure R. And I think, and I apologize for stopping so abruptly, but I think that covers it, and I know Mr. Cortez wanted to have a couple comments briefly.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, our city council, city staff. My name is Ralph Cortez, Measure R Chair. Our committee consists of our newest committee members, Tina Talamontes and Matt Shelton, and possibly another committee member joining us for our next meeting on July 25th, with one more vacant position open. First appointed August 13th, then reapplied for second appointment May 17th, and will term out April 20. As a committee member, we understood our roles was to review the fund numbers to the best of our ability, raise questions on any number discrepancy, or ask an explanation for overall better understanding of fund column or numbers. Speaking for myself, I never felt any discussion were short, hurried, or cut off. I remember sometimes a question would lead to an answer, then on to a current police event or community police topics. Our meetings were somewhat informal during the Bowen days, and now Chief Stockman, where questions are answered, and those, if those questions required follow-up, they were usually followed up by Dana, by way of electronic email, and Dana would get back to the group. At our April 25th, 2018 Measure R meeting, our city finance group was brought in to present overall fund breakdown and assist with any explanations. In my opinion, the overall level of detail from past fund packets was noticeable to myself and others, possibly because the prior packets were labeled by month and included a broader detail of specific categories. Since the lieutenant I had discussed this item, you might be able to explain it a little bit better after, if there's a little more questions on that one. Again, the new format packet, I'm confident the new format packet can have adjustments made, and I think, I think that's gonna, that's gonna happen. In closing, I would like, I look forward to seeing our K-9 unit and motorcycle units back on the streets of Galt in the near future. On behalf of the committee, we as a group invite the public to join us at our next Measure R Oversight Committee meeting July 25th at 6:00 p.m. at the Galt PD. Thank you very much. I actually have them. I did make copies, but as an example, and I can share it with the finance department, but we have kind of the prior version and the now version, and this was what I was referring to. So that's what I'm, I don't know if we need to go into broader explanation about that, but that's where the noticeable difference was, and that now, I believe this is going to be the norm for future meetings, that the finance group will be in attendance for these meetings.
So, I guess I don't understand. Are you saying that before it was easier to understand, and it's, the format currently is more difficult for you to understand as a layperson?
Well, I'm having a hard time trying to explain it, because the way, but the way we saw it in years past, it seemed like there was, again, I'm not quite sure how to explain it in finance terms.
I mean, we want it to be understandable to the committee, so if it's not understandable, then we, then we need to work with finance to make it understandable.
And we've, and that's correct. So what has evolved over time is the department led most of the financial discussions and were responsible to the financial reporting. However, over time, it gets more dynamic, and we're not in our lane for expertise in this finance area. So Emily's team has been gracious enough to come in and prepare those reports for us and explain those to the committee. The last committee meeting we had was the first meeting, and their numbers looked different and feel different to the committee. Ralph and I have had that discussion, and I've had an offline conversation briefly with Ms. Boyd in advance of this meeting, and we're going to work with Ralph to make sure that the sub-level categories, that's what he wants, the sub-orgs, better clearly defined in the next report that they'll see in July. So that's easy to achieve.
Okay, just so I understand, so before the police department was preparing the reports, and so now finance is repairing, preparing the report?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I think it was a check and balance as well, is what I, what I'm interpreting.
So is it more of a format than a content, or a format in content?
If you want to pass it to them.
Emily, Emily.
I only have one.
You'll get it back.
It's okay.
They won't keep them for.
Oh, it's okay. Do you want to say something?
You approach the mayor with it.
Mayor Huer. May. The reports that the police department had been generating had a great deal of detail. The report that the finance generated is summarized, and I believe that what Mr. Cortez is asking for is to have that detail returned to the report. The detail is line items, what is actually each GL account, each line item was spent. And in the finance department, we thought it was appropriate to summarize it, but the committee would prefer to have that detail, and we will certainly accommodate that in the future.
So looking at this, the police department did monthly line item accounting, and you guys summarized it for the?
That is a good.
Yeah.
You speak the language. I don't.
That's really not a problem in modifying the way we're presenting the report.
So finance was gracious enough, you know, and no good deed goes unpunished, so they took over the reporting for us, and there's a little transition that needs to occur in that regard, and it's easy to do. We do appreciate the fact that they are doing that work for us, because I think sometimes we were getting a little out there, trying to explain things we didn't fully understand, and having to delay our response to the next quarterly meeting, which is three months later, to the committee to fully vet that issue out. So we'll clearly work through that issue, but, you know, Measure R is becoming a bigger thing than it did back in 2008 when it first started, and easier to manage. So excellent people from finance, that's not the issue. Our responsibility is to be responsive to the committee and what they need, and we'll make sure that happens.
I just want to make note, too, that this was, this was discussed by the other members, so this isn't just me. I ran it by, I ran it by the other.
That's okay, Ralph. No, and Emily's very good at presenting information in different ways for people to understand, and maybe that's what the committee needs, is maybe they need it in graph more, I mean, some different, different ways for them to understand exactly.
Yeah, we can certainly accommodate that. We'll work with Lieutenant Kalinowski and Mr. Cortez and make sure that it is more useful perhaps to them in the future.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Ralph.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Any questions or comments regarding the presentations? Moving on, public comment.
Under Government Code, Section 5954954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address city council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located at the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the clerk.
Okay. Michael Dean.
My name is Michael Dean, for DMD Electric, introducing profitable project, energy generators assembly plant in Galt. All components are very similar to a bicycle. Verification is very simple. I urge council to approve project for benefit of people and country. Directions are well explained by Mr. Stephen Winkler, who did a great job on it, and also like to have appointment with Mr. Olson, who is engineer, so I can present a case for approval of the project. So I am pleading the council to approve the project, who can immediately create 1,000 jobs with the $40 minimum wages, and in the future, maybe 2005. Project is very important for me, this city, where I live, and the country. So please, I plead with you. Thank you. I'd like to have appointment with you maybe sometimes.
Anybody that knows me knows I'll talk to anybody, so not a problem. Send your email to the city clerk, and she'll forward it to me.
It's forward to you.
Yeah, I'll work it on my calendar.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, council, and I hope I can help.
Thank you. Julie Clark.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, my fellow citizens. I've come here tonight with the goal of keeping my comments as brief as possible, and I wouldn't feel as though I had to do this if the agenda was not bursting at the seams. There are 19 separate PDF attachments to this evening's agenda, each one pertaining to an item up for discussion. Many of these items are worthy of being the only new business item for the entire council meeting. There are multiple consequences associated with overloading the agenda. People stop coming to meetings, people leave before the business is concluded, people refrain from speaking because they don't want to take time away from others. Topics needing attention are rushed through. Important questions go unasked and unanswered. Considering the increased citizen presence at council meetings, it may be wise to consider a reevaluation of procedures for compiling agenda items. For if the goal is truly to engage the public and encourage participation, attendance at meetings should not disproportionately impact certain segments of the population, for example, those who wake early for. those who wake early for work, those who have disabilities or can't sit for extended periods of time, parents of small children, the elderly. I ask you to please consider restricting future agendas to those items which can reasonably be addressed in the space of a meeting. Thank you.
Glenn Spitzer?
My name is Glenn Spitzer. I'm a Galt resident for a while, and since 92. Simple question for the chief, actually, for, I'm a retired police officer, it doesn't really apply to me, but I do have two daughters who are adults, and we've been trying to apply for a CCW license for them, and we're having a hard time getting hold of the process here. There's, the city of Galt does have it on their, their pay sheets, or for their, to apply for the applications and the fee process, but they don't accept applications. So, and the clerk there just says that they, we should just go to the sheriff. Now, I understand that a lot of, some agencies are doing that, but the problem is, is that when you go to the sheriff, they're locked up for like two years. You can't get a spot on there because county's pretty large, there's a lot of people, a lot of people in it. So, so the city of Galt, if they're residents, they're kind of locked out, and they can't get it. So, I'd just like to know what's the reason why we don't have or don't accept applications? So, I'm sure the chief can get a hold of me on his own, or you can put it out there if he wants to, it's up to him. So, other than that, that's about it. Okay, thank you.
Chief, would you contact him?
If you can leave your name and number with the sergeant in the back, that would be great.
Okay, reports from city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. Mr. Molson?
Well, I think, I like many of the other council members and probably the audience, attended the Historical Society Dinner, great time. Other than that, it has been a quiet couple weeks, which is nice. Rare, nice.
Councilmember Campion?
Nothing to report tonight.
Councilmember Lamson?
I attended the volunteer appreciation breakfast, and it was fabulous, and we got to enjoy some of our caps and thank them for their many years of service. Also, we've had some wonderful people retire, our Lieutenant Chuck Didgersen and Lynn Hutchinson retired, so I attended, I got some cake, and attended that. Employee barbecue, I showed up at 12:25 and missed out on all the food, just saying, but I did go.
I didn't.
You didn't miss out on the food?
Well, I had to go to Taco Bell, so, anyway. And then we've had a few other things, the Historical Society Evening in Italy was wonderful, there was plenty of food, and you guys did a wonderful job and had a great time, appreciate it. I didn't win anything, unfortunately, but next year.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
I attended the, the dinner with the staff. I gotta tell you, we got a staff that not only does a good job for the city, but they can cook. I live now, I have nothing other than later on the street, and maybe we'll see.
Okay, I attended the mayor's select committee meeting, and it was regarding the wind down of redevelopment, and the decision was made that the city of Sacramento will represent all of the five cities on the, on the Oversight Committee for redevelopment that will be at the county level now, because we're really close to winding ours down, and city of Sacramento is the entity that had the most projects still, still on the books. And the employee picnic was wonderful. Yeah, thank you to all of the chefs, it's great. Historical Society Dinner was a very nice time, and I attended the library, the Library Authority Budget Meeting. Anyways, anything else? Move on. Information consent calendar. Minutes of the regular meeting, May 1st, 2018. Receive and file warrants for period ending May 2nd. Authorize the city manager execute an agreement with the Wildon Financial Services for consulting on Liberty Ranch Community Facilities District. Do we have a motion?
Just one on the backside.
Do you have another one? Oh, I'm sorry. Award, Award of On-Call Professional Services for Data Control and Maintenance System Support Services. Item 5, Veranda at River Oaks General Plan Amendment, Specific Plan Amendment, Rezone, Best Intensive Subdivision Map and Design Review Project. Item 6, Award of Internet Services Agreement to Softcom Internet Communications, Inc. And Item 7, Approval of Task Order Number 3 for Corillo Engineers for On-Call Construction Inspection Services.
So, move.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Campion, second by Councilmember Molson. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz? Councilmember Molson?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Huer?
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0 vote. City Council's Office, Discretionary Funds, Lamson?
Yes, I wanted to give the last half, which I thought I already asked for, to the CERT Committee. I just recently went through CERT training, Community Emergency Response Team, and I really want to encourage everybody to go through that. It's quite amazing, you learn a lot, we all need to be prepared, and it's a wonderful program. So, go online and check it out, and sign up for the next certification.
So, you're asking for $500?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have a motion?
I'll second.
Motion by Council, Vice Mayor Cruz, second by Councilmember Molson. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Molson?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Huer?
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0 vote. Committee Commissions Funding Requests. Provide direction to staff regarding...
Right, provide direction to staff regarding the amount of funding for city committees, commission for fiscal year 2018, 2019, and fiscal year 2019 and '20. City Clerk's Office directed support staff to contact the chairperson of each committee and commission regarding the funding opportunity, and staff received the following three responses from the Beautification Committee. They submitted a two-year budget proposal requesting $1,700 for fiscal year 2018 and $1,640 for fiscal year 2019, for a total of $3,340. They have approximately $430 to carry over into the following fiscal year. The last time they requested monies from the city council was in June 2014. The Commission on Aging also submitted a two-year budget proposal requesting $4,550 each fiscal year, and will also be carrying over a balance of approximately $500 into the next fiscal year. The last time the Commission on Aging requested funding was in May 2015. We didn't have a response back from the Public Safety Committee. We do have one from the Galt Youth Commission. They too submitted a two-year budget requesting $2,500 each fiscal year. They have approximately a balance of $500 that will be carried over into the next fiscal year. Last time they were awarded funding was in June 2016. Attached to the agenda report are their budgets and detailed information what the requesting monies for, and I believe all of them are here tonight, if you have additional questions for them. That concludes my break.
Any discussion, any questions, Donna? Any public comment? No public comment?
We're not going to hear from them.
If you'd like to, we can call them up, they're here.
Well, I've got, I've got a couple comments I'll just throw out, and we'll see if they want to come talk. Going into the next budget cycle, the city council up here is being asked to cut our expenses 20% on council travel and everything else. If you look at the leftover carryover amounts, if we're only, if we're looking at just a 10% reduction, it balances out pretty close to what they're asking for. An example is the Beautification Committee, their request is 3340, their carryover is 430, a 10% reduction, we'll give them about 3,000. So, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out now with the caveat that they can always come back and ask the council for additional funds, okay? We're talking budget here. So, if they have a project coming up or something that sounds pretty good, certainly come up and load it past council. I just, like I said, and once I throw those comments out, we'll see what response we get. Now we got a response.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is John Gordon. I'm one of the adult mentors for the Galt Youth Commission. Can't speak for the other committees, but I could tell you with ours, we have kind of an interesting process, because as you look through our proposals, it's very specific to professional development for the kids. We have a very interesting dynamic, where I have five adult mentors really working in the service of 10, 10 high school students, which is really unique, because when you look at Elk Grove, Zach City, County, it's really an administrative assistant person that's a, more or less, it's 10% of their job to run this whole committee. And so, we have a very robust program, as you've seen with our presentation. We, I think we do a lot for the, for the community. In regards to our budget, we have, we do raise money, and that's what, what our carryover looks like. Some of the funds, for instance, these t-shirts come from, from the money that we raise. So, by taking, I guess, that, that 10%, that would leave us really hamshung in terms of not being able to buy the new commissioner shirts, because we don't use the funding for that. Other means of fundraising that we do, we have a scholarship that we offer every year, which we will be awarding here in a couple of weeks, and that's where some of that, that money comes from, as well as some of the projects, what you've seen with the art exhibit project, for instance, that came from our donations pot of money, we had some carryover money, and also we, we applied for a grant. So, when you look at taking, you know, 10% off, you know, it does impact us, because the carryover money is used for stuff that's, may not be acceptable, you know, in terms of how we use public funds. Like I said, the shirts are a really perfect example, so we would request a little penny.
Thank you.
Anyone want to speak regarding Galt Beautification Committee?
I'm here.
I just have a couple of questions. The budget for advertising, $690, advertising for what?
Well, for example, we did the project first with the youth, and we gave away litter bags to help promote our plan to keep Galt looking good, and then we have other plans for the future to continue these kinds of programs, which will need some kind of promotion, yes, I would say, like the Galt Looking Good Program, where we're trying to change the attitude and the mindset of so many of us. If you drive from here into Elk Grove, I'm amazed at the amount of trash litter that you see that's just been tossed out a window. So, our hope is that we can take some baby steps in the city of Galt and work with the youth, as well as the high school students and businesses, to make people at least think about what they're doing when they have trash, and to make those changes in the way people think, it's going to take a lot of work and a lot of promotion.
The, the rose garden for the library? Does that affect, with the expansion plans for the library, is this, is the rose garden, because the light, because things will be turned around, so this isn't in an area where in a few years we'd be tearing it out?
No, it's more towards the front, and I would say that the rose garden plan was actually created by the previous Beautification Committee. Their chairman, Janine St. Clair, passed away, and they were unable to complete that. So, we felt like we would really like to continue to finish what they had hoped, had hoped to do. But it, the location is more towards the front, down towards the street, not up close to the building. And they've already, they had already met with the library, and the library was very anxious and supportive of having this done.
Would this, would the Beautification Committee be maintaining it? Just because the issue is that roses require a lot of maintenance?
One of the things...
Unlike, I mean, because what's, what's landscape there now is basically kind of drought tolerant, natural kind of plantings. The roses would be a little different.
One of the things about the Galt Beautification Committee is we are hands-on. We, you know, we plant the plants, we put the dirt in the, in the pots and everything, so, yeah, if it's required, I'm sure it's something that we will enjoy doing. I can't speak for, you know, too many Beautification Committee members in the future, but that's our plan now. Just as we're trying to complete the past Beautification Committee's plan, I'm confident that future Beautification Committees will want to continue what we started.
Well, I really like your plans. I mean, I think that, you know, I, I think, I agree with you, the Lake Canyon sign needs some, needs some planting, and, you know, last year I worked with Girl Scouts to plant out at Police Department, and need to go and replant it again. So, it's, so that's great. Okay, any other questions?
On the, on, so the $500 would buy the initial number of roses and tags, is it, rosebushes and tags, is that what you're saying?
Well, where, the way it was originally conceived was that some of the people that had, or that wanted a memorial rose to be put in there, they would select it.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Okay. So, they would select it, and then the committee would purchase it, or they purchase it and implant it, or what?
No, we, we would plant it.
Okay.
And hopefully that will cover it. You don't know how, how much support this program will have, and as it was mentioned, if, if it becomes overwhelming that so many people want to have a memorial rose there, then we might have to come back midterm or something.
Okay. So, you don't, because I'm just reading what the report says, that the public would donate an amount to cover the cost of the plant and the memorial tag, so I don't, so that's just a possibility of what you're saying?
Yeah, well, and the other, the main part was for the memorial tag, and find out what they want planted. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I was trying to figure out whether this is seed money, or would be an ongoing budget requirement?
It could be an ongoing budget requirement if we have more people respond than what we are guessing will respond.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, may I, may I comment? We, we have a tree and bench donation policy that might cover this, if you wanted to add roses to it. It'd be the responsibility of the people donating the roses to pay for it. Just so you know that anything that's in the landscaping is maintained by our contractors that Parks and Rec contracts with, Proceda. So, if, if they default and do not maintain the, the roses, we will maintain them. It'll be our responsibility.
I had met with Armando and discussed, especially the planning on corillion, on some of those medians, as to what would be the best thing to plant, and he did mention that if we do some kind of a rose bush, I'm not talking about at the library now, I'm talking about the project on corillion, that they would be maintained by their professional landscaping people.
Armando, isn't Lake Canyon corillion, I mean, it's covered by the Lighting and Landscape District, correct?
Yes, it is. It's 32, landscaping 32.
So, I guess what I understand is that we're already paying... So I guess what I understand is that we're already paying, I mean, that's already in the city budget to cover the lighting and landscape of that area.
Correct.
Correct?
There's money that goes into that landscaping. The way I understand it is this is funding through the committee to do projects. And that would, whether it's in '06, '32, '33, or '37, they're asking for money to do those projects in those areas.
There's already, at the Lake Canyon sign, there's already irrigation there, and I'm assuming at one time they had plants, but there's nothing, nothing there now. And we're willing to do it.
Yeah, I went by and looked at it. There's nothing there now. Okay. Any further questions? Thank you. So mission on aging? Anyone here?
Yep.
Any questions you have of our reports, please?
Who gets your calendars?
The elderly community, we usually, we distribute them at like Extravaganza and other community activities that we are a part of, or that we become a part of. And we had 200 for this year, including five for you all. And they went, they're gone. So anyway, it's a resource, that calendar is a resource calendar, and it enables the elderly, of course, if they have a question about where do I go to get this done, it addresses that for them, gives them a phone number or contact number. And this year, we're, for 2019, we're attempting to get 500 instead of the 200 we did for 2018, because this one was kind of very successful. And so, you know, and this is in conjunction with our plan to discuss at our next meeting, which is coming up in May, the idea of creating or coming up with a resource center for the elderly, with a, you know, like an office, a phone, a computer, and volunteers. So I submitted my monthly report, well, my monthly report or column in the Herald coming out tomorrow, that addresses the issue of opening up such a center. And I want to thank Mayor Hewer for attending our meeting last month, when we had the executive director of the Elk Grove Senior Center come and present to us her, the way, what she did to have the center in Elk Grove come about. From, it started out in the house, then it went to the garage, because, you know, it got expanded. And now they've got a huge center. They've got about 1,500 people that go there. We couldn't even find parking when we went to visit there, so we invited her to come to us. And so this calendar that you asked about is kind of like the seed that will make that center become a reality here in Galt. And eventually, probably beyond my time, because I'm so darn old, we may have a center like Elk Grove has for the elderly here in Galt. That's our dream, and so we're going that direction. That's the most expensive portion of our budget, as you can see. Now, I make a commitment to this, to the council on behalf of the committee, I will try to cut the cost of that calendar even more than we did last year. So there may be some, probably going to be some money left over. And whatever money we don't spend, we do whatever we got to do to get it back to you all. You have any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Well, I pulled the pin in the discussion. I'll go ahead and make the motion to agree with the funding request.
Second.
The motion by Councilmember Molson. Second by Councilmember Cruz. Roll call vote. Further discussion?
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Molson?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Hewer?
Aye. Keep flipping around. Okay, where are we at? Community Benefit Funding Grant. Donna?
Okay. This is to review the funding request applications and make funding determinations. The first grant was awarded in fiscal year 2014. The most recent city council, most recently city council approved amending the Community Benefit Funding Grant policy to include categories 501(c), 3, 4, 6, and 7. Staff prepared the application process and advertised locally. We received three applications as follows. The Galt Area Historical Society has requested $10,000. LaHeime of Galt Incorporated, there's an error in the agenda report, they've only requested $3,550. Perfectly Possible, $5,000. Attached to the agenda report are the completed applications, also the grant policy, and a list of past award recipients. Do you have any questions or comments?
Would you like to hear from the requests, Council?
Yes, we did invite out all three organizations, and I see that they are in the audience.
Okay. The first one, she actually put it up. Okay, we have public comment. Angel Morgan?
My name, I'm going to read this because I'm getting nervous when y'all are looking at me. So let me get my glasses. My name is Angel Morgan. I'm from LaHeime of Galt, and I'm the Secretary to the Board of Directors. I have two items to discuss tonight. First, I would like to take a moment to thank the council and the city of Galt for letting us use their facilities for our annual Bunko event that we do once a year for no charge. LaHeime has always struggled to make ends meet. Our original fundraising efforts were started by Gloria Stemler in saving pennies, and we still do that today. Once, we had to close our doors because the donations were at an all-time low. Thankfully, we were able to reopen in a new, beautiful space. My point is, is that every penny at LaHeime counts, and being able to keep those fundraising dollars is very important to us. If the nonprofits are not keeping to the agreements they signed to clean up after their events, keep their deposit. Use it to pay for cleaning, garbage pickup, whatever. But please don't punish the nonprofits who are following your rules, like LaHeime, by taking away our one-time-a-year free. So I'll keep going. The second matter is in regards to the community grant. We turned our application in last month, and LaHeime would like to be working with the Consumers Fire District and the Galt Police Department on their 2018 community toy drive to provide pillowcases for each child who will be getting a toy. These pillowcases will be included with, included with or used as gift bags for larger gifts. Are volunteers in the audience? These are holding up a few examples of the colorful prints that we have used to make pillowcases. These pillowcases can be used well beyond the holiday season, and we're hoping that you will agree that LaHeime of Galt can provide a service to the other community groups that are already working towards making this event a success. If you approve our grant, we will start making pillowcases as soon as possible. Thank you for your time and consideration. Good night.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Do we have any comments from the other organizations? Historical Society or Perfectly Plausible? Okay. To the council.
You got one?
Oh, I'm sorry, Janice. I didn't see you. Go ahead.
Didn't see me.
No.
Thank you, Mayor Hewer and councilmembers. I'm Janice Barsetti-Grey, President of the Galt Area Historical Society. The Galt Area Historical Society requests for funds for our project of major repair on the Ray House Museum. We are in need of a new roof at a cost of $7,600. Some windows need repair or replacement. There are spots of rot on the front porch and front steps. The ceiling is heavily cracked and in need of painting in the center dining room area in the house. Approximate cost would be about $40,000. At this time, I'd like to share a little history of the Ray House Museum and how it became the Museum of Galt. John Ray built the Victorian home in 1868, where it stands today at 204 Oak Street. He became rich in the goldfields, and then he became a large rancher in Galt. Many of us knew his daughter, Alice Ray. She was a Galt High graduate. She became an elementary school teacher for 30 years and became Galt City Clerk in 1955. In 1969, when the Ray House was 101 years old, the city of Galt selected the Ray House as Galt's Centennial Home. It was featured on the cover of Galt's Centennial Souvenir Book. In 1985, Alice became too ill to maintain the home and the property. She was moved into a convalescent home. With no one to care for the house and the grounds, the Ray House, the Ray Home became a target for vandals. After Alice passed away and the property was in probate, the house continued to deteriorate. It was structurally sound, but vandals caused interior damage. It was reported that a developer had bought the property and was going to demolish it to build new homes on the site. At the same time, the Galt Area Historical Society was forming. It was obvious that we needed a place for our archives and our artifacts of Galt. Our founders confirmed with the city of Galt, the Ray was due to be demolished. We began our Save the Ray campaign, and that was a big campaign going on at that time. The city of Galt negotiated a deal with a developer to turn over the Ray House to the city in exchange for waiver of certain developmental fees, certain development fees. Once the city of Galt had the property back, they handed the Ray House to the Galt Area Historical Society on the condition that we would restore the house to its original condition and create and maintain a historic museum for the Galt residents to enjoy, and that we have done. The Galt Area Historical Society had $700 in our bank account when we got the Ray. And thanks to Sacramento County, the city of Galt, all community organizations, businesses, and individuals, we were able to raise the money to save the Ray and restore the home. The project cost $190,000 in those days. We opened our doors in 1991. Because of the historical preservation and by following the state criteria, the Ray House Museum is on the California Historic Register. That's why the cost is a little higher, because you have to follow rules even to put windows in a historic site if you're on the register. The city of Galt has partnered with the Galt Area Historical Society through the years to help when we needed a picket fence and when we had dry rot in the basement. The Ray House Museum may be owned by the Galt Area Historical Society, but it is Galt's museum, our only museum where visitors and residents can come and learn about early California life and history, see old photos, and look at old artifacts. As with all old homes, even after they are restored, there's constant maintenance and repair. I asked the city council of Galt to again help the Galt Area Historical Society preserve this wonderful home, our city's museum. We appreciate your consideration and hope you will see the need to award this grant to the Ray House Museum. We would ask for time and material to complete this project. Thank you very much.
So the community grant is, the budget contains $10,000 for allocation to Galt nonprofits. We have a request for $18,500. So what's the pleasure of the council session?
This is known as a wicked decision, in case you're wondering, okay? It's a hard one.
Split it in thirds, $3,333.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, let's make a motion.
So the motion is?
To split the committee funding grant between the three applicants, $3,333 and 33 cents.
One of them gets 34.
Okay, one gets 34. I need to happen.
Divide it evenly among the four, among the three organizations. Do I have a second? Motion fails for lack of a second. Session?
And now what are we going to do?
Well, I had a suggestion, and the Ray House, the Ray House is a very important portion of this community, and I would, I would agree it should be split three ways, but I'd like to see 6,000 of it go towards the Historical Society, 3,500 towards LaHeime, and the remainder towards the other, the other Perfectly Plausible.
The motion is 6,000 to the Historical Society, and this is the motion?
Yes, please.
And 3,500 to LaHeime, and?
1,500, I think.
1,500 to Perfectly Plausible. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I would second that. I think that, you know, the city has historically supported the Ray House. I think it's an important community asset, and it needs a roof. You need to protect the structure, and I think that that is critically important. If you like the Heime project, I think that's great. Certainly, certainly Plausible is a very important organization, and hopefully that $1,000 will-
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, I'm a past president of the Historical Society Ray House Museum Board. My daughter actually cut the ribbon on the Ray House renovation, so I understand how important it is, so I, yeah.
I just have a question. Maybe you can ask this, Chief. Last year, how many children in the community received Christmas? Was it about 500? Is that what, 600?
Usually, we plan for 500, but we had a lot more last year.
So we'd need about 600 pillowcases?
Could you repeat your motion, because I don't think the numbers were adding up. You had 6,000, 3,500, correct?
Correct.
Leave a balance of 500.
At least 500 for luck. Thank you.
$500 for Perfectly Plausible?
And that's why my wife does the books.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? Call for the vote? Roll call.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Molson?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Hewer?
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0 vote. I thought the pillowcases were darling. Okay. Parks and Rec Department, do they have Galt Special Events sponsorship?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Given the presentation today will be our Special Events Manager, Jackie Garcia.
Hi.
Hi. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight I will be presenting to you the Special Event Sponsorship Program Review for, and funding sheets for 2018 fiscal year. In 2017, the city of Galt approved the Special Event Sponsorship Program. The purpose of the sponsorship policy was to set forth guidelines and criteria governing the granting of issuance of the city of Galt. Funds are in-kind service- funds or in-kind services for the purpose of supporting local festivals, special events, community projects, programs. With this, June of two thousand seventeen, City Council approved the ten special events with an estimated hard cost of twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-five. Those special events included the Chamber Food Truck Event, Tiny Smiles Run, Shop Local Extravaganza, Chamber Strawberry Festival, Shop Local Summer Market, Heritage Festival, Galt Joint Union High School District Homecoming Parades, Galt High School Best Academy, Galt Joint Union High School District Every Fifteen Minutes, and Galt FFA Boosters Farm to Fork Dinner. After approval, the Galt Chamber of Commerce notified the city they will no longer be holding their strawberry festival. And the Galt Joint Union High School withdrew their application. Provided is the special event cost projections and actual hard costs for the ten events approved. As shown, as shown on the aligned items, Chamber Food Truck and Shop Local Summer Market Event had no hard costs due to hosting and moving their events to the promenade. Strawberry Festival Event was canceled, and Galt Joint Union did not move forward withholding their event. If you like more details on specific event costs, please refer to the funding sheets included in the staff report. Total actual expenses for overall ten events were captured by the following. Hard staff costs included, staff time worked other than their regular schedule, any materials requested such as trash bags. Additional hard cost savings would have been prepared event site during normal work hours. PD officers may, may be at a lower rate due to entry-level officers working event. Volunteers were used in conjunction with police services if street locations were low risk. Does not include mid-manage, mid-managers and directors' time since we are exempt employees. And facility rentals are not considered hard costs. That bringing the actual hard cost total to be nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-three-four. Any questions?
So, how much under budget?
About fifteen thousand dollars, I believe.
Sorry, I turned my cell phone on.
And I would like to add just one more comment that on these funding sheets, these funding sheets are not numbers that we provided. These are numbers that were provided by the organizations. The hard costs where you see on the third page where it stays, city use only, those are the numbers that we've put in there. All other numbers are put in by the organizations.
Any public comment? Any further questions from staff? From council? Okay, thank you. Next item, City of Galt Special Events Sponsorship Program for Fiscal Year Two Thousand Nineteen.
All right. As we review the fiscal two thousand eighteen, we are now accepting a two thousand nineteen fiscal year sponsorship request. What I am bringing to you today is a list of applicants for your consideration and provide direction to staff regarding the events, monetary amounts, and in-kind contributions. The community impact with hosting these events would be developing communication and social networks within a community, enhancing community spirit, creating a memorable and impact experience, and providing Galt residents with more opportunities for fun and inexpensive activities. The sponsorship policy goals and objectives were to promote the City of Galt as a desirable place to live, visit, and do business, promote the City of Galt as a visitor destination, and our bring tourism associated with revenue to the city, enhance the quality of life and well-being in of the citizenry, advance the citizens, city's commitment to, to and pride in being a multicultural community, encourage the development of neighborhood identity and pride, promote cultural and artistic awareness among the citizenry, aligns with the City of Galt Mission Statement and our strategic plan. Here's a recap of the applications along with those are estimated hard costs from the city on what each event would cost us. Vet Track Project Incorporated, the Vet Stock Festival. Location would be the Veterans Field, scheduled on September fifteenth, two thousand eighteen. This is a ticketed event expecting about fifteen hundred people. City sponsorship cost would be thirty-five hundred. Galt FFA Ag Boosters Farm to Fork Dinner. The location was presented for Fourth Street between C and E, but they have now decided to move forward to the promenade. The event is scheduled for September twenty-second. A ticketed event, four hundred people expected, and there'll be no hard costs to this because of the change in location. Galt Chamber of Commerce and Galt Sunrise Rotary, Galt Oktoberfest. The location is Fourth Street between B and C Street. Scheduled date is October thirteenth, two thousand eighteen. This is a ticketed event with four hundred people, and the city sponsorship cost would be thirty-three thousand five hundred and fifty. Tiny Smiles Run. They are locate, their location would be Littleton Community Center, the market grounds, and city streets. The date is February ninth of two thousand nineteen. The part, there is a fee for participants to register. They're expecting anywhere from three hundred and fifty to five hundred attendees, and their sponsorship cost would be nine thousand ten. Galt Chamber of Commerce Shamrock Festival. Location, Fourth Street between B and D. Scheduled March sixteenth, two thousand nineteen. This is a free community event, expecting five hundred, and the city sponsorship cost would be two thousand one ninety. Galt Chamber of Commerce Extravaganza. Location would be Fourth Street between B and D. Scheduled for April thirteenth, two thousand nineteen. It's a free community event, and they're expecting five thousand, and the city sponsorship cost would be two thousand one ninety.
May I just interrupt for one quick second? We did not update this. We were provided updated attendance information for the extravaganza and the number of three thousand people.
Galt Chamber of Commerce, Galt Street Fair. Location is Fourth Street between B and D Street. Schedule, the date of the event is June twenty-third, two thousand nineteen. It's a free community event, and they're expecting five thousand. City sponsorship, twenty-one ninety. The Galt Chamber of Commerce Food Truck Mania. The location is Fourth Street between B and C Street. First Saturday of each month. They're actually on the promenade. It's a free community event. They're expecting five hundred, and it's no cost, no hard cost to the city. The Galt Chamber of Commerce, Galt Summer Vendor Fair. Location is Fourth Street Promenade between B and D. Scheduled for May nineteenth and June thirtieth of two thousand nineteen. It's a free community event expecting five hundred, and the city sponsorship cost is none because it's on the promenade. The Galt Chamber of Commerce is in conjunction with the sponsor, city-sponsored event, which is the Christmas Vendor Fair and Food Truck Mania. This is actually located on Civic Drive between C Street and Caroline. It's scheduled for December first of two thousand eighteen. It's a free community event and expecting five hundred. There is no cost to this because it's in conjunction with our lighting of the night, and streets are already closed for our city event. Should City Council approve all eleven events, the estimated hard cost would be twenty-four thousand five hundred and ten dollars. Any questions?
We, we would just have to modify that amount, subtracting the Farm to Fork event. Sorry, they just notified us today that they, after we met with them, after Councilman Mollson suggested that they would be going out to the Fourth Street Promenade.
I'm looking at the list you gave us. On page three fifty-two, we've got Oktoberfest. And then above that, it's the Heritage Festival. Is that, should that be in there?
No, they removed, they withdrew their application after they submitted. That's why the Heritage Festival's not in the presentation. It is, they did submit a proposal, but withdrew.
It's just still in here with all the costs and everything.
Right.
And then for the Vet Tech, it says in-kind donation, thirty-five hundred dollars, but there's no police or anything listed. They don't need?
They're, they're already paying for the police officers. We've come to an agreement for them to pay for those. When we approve the event, they're asking for a donation of thirty-five hundred dollars.
What about other staff? Because it looks like every event's running about twenty-five to twenty-eight hundred dollars in staff costs.
There, there is no staff cost for, for that. It are hard costs. It's all soft costs. We're, we're renting Veterans Field to them, so they're paying for that rent, which includes our admin time to process all the paperwork. The police officers, they've already agreed on the number and the amount, so they would be paying directly to the police department. No other hard cost to the city other than lights for the facility that they agreed to pay for.
Well, when you look at?
I noticed in the policy, the sponsorship policy, item five, it says that sponsorship requests not to exceed five thousand per event.
But it also states that you have the discretionary to override that amount.
Right, so we would be overriding it if we so choose in one event.
Correct.
Of all of these.
In the Trex, Vet Treks, they actually had in their brochure what it costs for?
We provided the completed expense report.
Last year, Tiny Smiles' actual cost was three thousand. And this year, they're requesting nine.
That would be five thousand in, in donated money and four thousand in in-kind, four thousand or whatever that is. And those are, again, estimated costs. Should we have to, you know, know mid-managers depending on the salary? That's how we're estimating these.
We provide officers to all these events. They can't, they don't hire their own security?
Yes, we meet with the chief and Public Works when we discuss these events, and then they tell us what their requirements would be.
Now, that appears to always be kind of the biggest hard cost to the city is, is the officers. Yeah, well, it sounds like Vet, Vet Tech was paying for their own?
Is it possible to get that summary sheet back up on this one?
Yeah.
I can't find it.
I know, it's way, like on page three seventy, three eighty.
I don't have it.
Here you go.
This one, I hate this.
Do any of them want to talk?
Well, for discussion purposes, I, I, you know, we have a policy limitation, five thousand dollars. I would maintain or recommend that we maintain that at this point. So that whatever the, you know, the, which only affects the one, unfortunately, one of them, but I don't think we should, I don't think we should go over the policy limit.
I would agree.
And their actual costs were three thousand last year.
Find out what the cost was.
Yeah, and they're asking for, on top of that, a five thousand dollar cash donation.
Mayor, we have a representative from Tiny Smiles in the audience. If you'd like to speak to him.
Council like to hear from Tiny Smiles?
I would.
That's council.
Okay.
I just want to clarify. I did not ask for nine thousand dollars. My actual costs in two thousand eighteen were thirty-one hundred dollars. We're just asking to have the event again. So that nine thousand dollars is not our number, correct? That is?
No, it's in the application and how you filled it out. You asked for five thousand cash and then plus in-kind.
We do not need nine thousand dollars. For our actual costs in two thousand eighteen, we're closer to thirty-one hundred. That's what we're looking for.
Yeah.
So that he would be looking for the hard cost, not the monetary donation, which would drop that down to four thousand ten dollars?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, the application said five thousand plus in-kind.
We're well within the policy then.
So if with, so, just to understand, so Vet Trex is paying all of their hard costs and then asking for thirty-five hundred from us? What are, what are their hard costs that they're paying?
They're paying for the rental of Veterans Field, police officers. I don't have the number exactly what we had agreed upon in front of me. And then any light usage that's required and restrooms.
So do you have any idea of what the cost, that, what that cost was?
I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me. It was a, they, they had approached us before this, we made this public for this fiscal year, and then they applied for that after we had already agreed to contract to have this concert here on the, on Veterans Field.
Well, I guess I would, I would rather see that we do, that we keep consistent and that we do the same sort of thing that we do with other organizations, and we waive the cost of light Veterans Field. And we cover some of those kind of costs instead of an outright donation of thirty-five hundred. Because that's not?
Our security fees, Mayor, were twenty-four hundred dollars.
Could you use the microphone, please?
Yes.
Go ahead, come on up. Hi, how are you?
Good evening. Our security costs were twenty-four hundred dollars. The renting of the field was six hundred dollars. Of course, we have the deposits for the trash and waste, but typically with Vet Stock, what we do is, we were obviously bringing it to Galt, and we were looking for the City of Galt to actually be a sponsor and be listed as, you know, like Cal Waste is one of our sponsors. We have three main sponsors. Well, we asked for three main sponsors because it does cost about thirty thousand dollars to put the event on. And if you saw on our expense, our expense report, we were basically only going to make four hundred dollars if everything. That's good for us because we were just trying to put on a good show for everybody. And then it's not to make money, it's just to keep our organization going. So all the costs incurred is, we always try to absorb it because of the ticket sales, and we try to keep everything. The ticket sales basically is what pays for our national acts. And like I discussed last time, their, their normal rate is way different than what they're charging us, which is amazing, so.
No, I, I'm excited about your event. It's something new and it's something different. But what I'm saying is that, when you say the twenty-four hundred dollar for your security cost, was that from the city?
Yes, that was from the attorney.
So, so what, what I'm proposing is instead of give, is that we do sponsor your event, but that we do it by covering those costs, not by giving you thirty-five hundred dollars.
That would be, that would be awesome.
That's kind of my, my suggestion, that we give you up to thirty-five hundred on covering things like, because that's what we do for these other events. We don't give them, okay?
I'd rather not have cash. I'd rather.
And then we're still sponsoring your event.
Yes, ma'am.
We're still assisting you with the sponsors just as we do these other events. That's kind of what I'm proposing, so that we stay consistent. We don't generally, you know, we don't generally do that. We usually cover these other.
The only one stipulation we would request if, if the committee so approves it is to use the logo.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Because obviously, our advertising, we want to put that out there because, again, like I said, people don't know where Galt is, and they're like, hey, we're over here. So, any other questions?
Further discussion, or we have a motion?
I wonder if we hands up on Tiny Smiles, because I'm, I'm.
He didn't ask for that.
For, okay, so the.
Forty-eight.
I have in here, in two different areas, something that amounts to about nine thousand dollars. One's eighty-eight, fifty, eighty-eight, eighty-five, and another one's nine thousand ten dollars, so that's close. But my question is, the, the budget amounts, I don't know which, which, is this your report here, this section, or is that someone else?
That would be ours.
He's not asking for the five thousand dollars.
Okay, so, so it is only for the thirty-two eighty-five.
And probably not. Hard costs.
And the Chipotle, six hundred for the Chipotle.
Okay, okay.
Or under five.
Okay, okay.
So Tiny Smiles is about four thousand if you deduct the five thousand.
Yeah, a little, little under.
Do we need to make a motion with amendments for that, or?
And then FFA is, is, we're anticipating, so FFA, there still would be some costs because we're paying for police officers? It was part of the hard costs on it.
Yes, if the chief still requires officers to be on-site, there would still be the cost for the officers.
I think there's drinking. I mean, it's out in the open, four hundred people. Probably needs to.
So I, I would just subtract the cost for the street closures.
Which is your Public Works, maintenance, so forth?
Correct.
Okay.
How do we go about motioning for all that? How do we go about motioning for all that?
You know, I, all of these events keep money in our community. I, I think Tiny Smiles is a wonderful event. I still continue to have the same concerns that I had last year in the fact that it's a fundraiser for an organization that primarily serves people outside of our community as the rest of these events are serving people within our community. I think the race is wonderful, but...
I think it does serve a lot of racers in town. They've also donated defibrillators to the city. I think one's, two, how many defibrillators, Pastor?
Two.
It gets their name out there so people find out where Galt is.
I would make a motion to fund with the, two modifications, two changes that were discussed, three changes.
Three.
One, FFA, which we would, it's not a hard cost, I mean, it's not a direct cost, so it's simply whatever staff time it's going to take. And then secondly, the Vetrex, which they would simply, we would waive the soft costs again, staff, and then modification, Tiny Smiles, simply reduce the $5,000 which was requested in, for the other costs as presented.
So we're down around $2,000, or $20,000 for events?
Yeah. We did save 15 from last year.
Yeah, 15 from, Armando, that 15 from last year, approximately, that, would that, would that roll into, into the next budget, would that roll over?
No, it will not.
No.
Okay, so we have a motion to fund all of the events with the modifications of 5,000 less to Tiny Smiles and, and Vet stock that we would cover hard, hard costs up to 3,500, hard and soft costs up to 3,500? Is that what the, we're doing this? That's the motion?
That was it.
You missed one.
I second it.
And... You missed one.
Missed one?
On, on the readback, on the FFA, right.
FFA.
Oh, and cover FFA.
Well, FFA's, yeah, it's, the staff cost is.
Yeah.
You're revising Tiny Smiles up, up to $33,500, is that correct? Is that what you...
I believe it was...
Four thousand, one, four thousand.
It was 4,100, wasn't it?
Minus the five, just take the 5,000 out.
4,100, is that correct?
Just take 5,000 off of that number.
And this is all reimbursed, so it's, then next year we'll get what the actual cost was because obviously the actual cost this year was, was far less than what was budgeted.
Correct, and these are just estimated costs that what we're giving you at a possible higher rate, depends on which personnel actually go out and do the job. You know, there's times that the maintenance supervisor for Public Works, which is a mid-manager, he's out there and there is no hard cost because he's an exempt employee. Jackie, myself, the chief, we're all exempt employees, so there are no costs for us. So when we're out there taking the place of a paid body, there's cost savings.
I'm still always concerned that when we take staff away, even though it's a soft cost and they might be on duty, we take them away to work these events, then we have bathrooms not getting cleaned and we have all sorts of things not happening in the community that those employees regularly do.
And, and that's one of the reasons we were able to lower the prices last year is that Public Works did a great job in setting up for the events, the street closures the day before, and then just moving them off to the side and then picking things up on, on Monday, you know, during regular hours versus, you know, in in the morning, set up and then take everything down at night. You know, Parks has done a great job in, in getting everything ready during their off-time and getting it prepped, so that's why you saw a lot of the reduced costs.
Okay. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Mollson.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Huer.
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0 vote. Fiscal Department, master fee schedule update, resident nonprofit fee, Emily?
Good evening, Mayor Huer. This item is an, an update to the master fee schedule which was adopted by the council on March the 6th, with the exception of this one item on the nonprofit rental fees, and Mr. Solis will present.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to explain my attire today. I coach at Liberty Ranch High School and we're in the middle of a playoff game today. Something called a job kept me away from going to the game today, so I'm waiting for the phone to ring to tell me that we won, so green and silver all the way.
We don't know yet, huh?
So, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Today I'll be discussing the nonprofit rental fee. In 2012, City Council approved a resolution which added the zero rental cost for local nonprofit rentals to the city fee schedule. This allowed local nonprofits to use the Chabola and Littleton Center twice a year for zero costs. If they decided to rent it for a third year, it would be at the established local nonprofit resident rate of $400 at the time. In 2013, they revisited this resolution and they reduced the number of free rentals from two to one, and then if they had the second, they would have to pay the then cost of $500 for the established local nonprofit fee. At the March 6th, 2018 City Council meeting, staff brought forward the master fee schedule which included the Parks and Rec Department fees. This was one of 57 fees that was brought forward to you on behalf of Parks and Recreation. In the recommend, in the recommended fee schedule, staff recommended the deletion of the zero-cost local nonprofit rental fee for the community centers, which were to require the local nonprofits to pay the established local nonprofit rate of $600, which is a 50% reduction of the private rate of $1,200. City Council directed staff to further analyze the fee and return to City Council to provide more information justifying the deletion of the zero cost. Staff researched some nonprofit rental rates, similar facilities in the City of Lodi and Elk Grove, and here are those rates. City of Galt Littleton Center, $1,200 resident fee, nonprofit $600. City of Lodi, cursed hall, 3250, our nonprofit rate is $2,400. Now, this rate is for an all-day rental. There is a half-day rental that is substantially lower, but traditionally our nonprofits use the facility all day, that's why that number's up there. CSD Elk Grove Laguna Town Hall, 1750, and they give a 20% nonprofit rental rate across the board for their facilities, that would equal $1,400. Over the past few years, there have been a number of maintenance projects, repairs and upgrades to the Littleton Center. Above here, in the amount of $102,600, are projects that were recently completed. Down below, an unfunded $325,000 of projects that need to be completed within the next coming years. This list was provided to me by Building Maintenance. Staff also reviewed all of the 2017 nonprofit rental applications for the community center and in trying to figure out what the real costs are, or what our real hard costs were, we figured a couple of factors into this. Attendance is one. We figured if we had over 200 people there, they're going to be using the sewer, the water, and the paper towels more than if you had like an event for 100 people. And yes, we do pay our water and sewer bill too, just like everybody else does, so we do see that. And the second is an alcoholic event. You know, seems to be that when we have these alcoholic events, they're not typically left rental-ready and, and we have to go back in and spend some time, one to four hours depending on the event. And at our Parks and Rec Commission meeting, we did have a good discussion with, with the local nonprofits, and one of the discussions was is us actually charging them when they're not rental-ready. So that's something that I've discussed with some facility maintenance people to try and, and fairly collect that money, should they leave it not rental-ready. So that's something that we're, we're looking at really imposing in the near future.
One second, Armando, so how would you determine that? By how much staff time it took to...
Right, I mean, if we have to pick up, you know, if we have to just mop a spot, that's nothing, but if we're spending, you know, more than an hour in a location, and we're going to have to justify that, we're not just going to say, oh, we spent an hour. We're going to, we're going to take photos, we're going to document, we're going to really show the fact that we had to spend that extra time there.
Well, I know one of my concerns always is, is that, I know the nonprofits aren't going in and scrubbing the bathrooms, I mean, you wouldn't even typically, so we're always going to have staff time going in and scrubbing bathrooms and restocking supplies, so there's always going to be some staff time, almost regardless of the event.
And even if they get it cleaned to a point where it was acceptable, depending on the event, like a crab feed, you'll, you have that smell that you have to just use some of these industrial cleaners to get that smell out of the kitchen, the bathrooms, the floors, so it's something that they're not really capable or have the tools to do like the scrubbers that we have to really get in there and clean that facility.
Well, and the cost of the extra dumpsters that we have to bring in.
Correct, and we will be taking pictures of all of that, just documenting to make sure that we're not unfairly charging anyone.
Armando?
Yes, sir.
Is there, do you take a deposit then?
We do, we take a $150 deposit, it's a reduced deposit for nonprofits, and we, it's typically rolled over because these events happen every year. They are eligible to get it back every year and then pay it back when they have the event, so...
Is that sufficient to cover these costs that you're talking about currently?
If we work four hours, it is.
One individual, four hours?
Right, it's at a rate of $30 per hour.
Okay.
In the contract. So, staff came up with some alternatives that the council could, could possibly consider. One, we could accept staff, staff's recommendation from the March 6th council meeting and delete the resident nonprofit fee. Do not make any changes to the current fee schedule. Waive the rental fee if the event does not exceed 200 people and no alcohol is served. Just to give you an example of what that would look like, here are the 2017 rentals. Highlighted are the events that are over 200 and serve alcohol. Have any questions on this?
Well, we had discussed last time about the issue that I was feeling like Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts and, and 4-H, those kind of things. They sometimes use our facility for their programs, such as, you know, I, I would say that their father-daughter, their bridging ceremonies, those are part of scouting program, golden blue dinner for Boy Scouts, even though I don't see it up there. I know they used to hold it at our facility. That, my feeling was that those organizations shouldn't be charged, I mean, because those organizations are offering youth programs.
And, and under these policies...
They're not, not, they're not fundraisers.
And if you choose this, they wouldn't be because normally they don't serve alcohol at those type of events? So if you choose alternacy, it wouldn't be charged?
And what was the recommendation by the, by the...
I was going to get to that at the end, would you like that now?
Well, yeah.
Okay.
I thought you were at the end.
No, I'm not.
Okay, keep going.
So, the next one, I actually met with the local nonprofit coalition, and this was a great suggestion that came out of the meeting. We couldn't come to a meeting of the minds that day, but I did want to bring this forward because I thought it was a great suggestion. So dedicate all revenues from the nonprofit rentals to the designated maintenance fund that can be used for ongoing maintenance of the facility. You could do a combination of C and D. Whoops. You could provide staff direction. This information was, was presented to the Parks and Rec Commission at their May 9th meeting, and they voted for one for alternative B, which would be do not make any changes to the current fee schedule. Staff's recommendation tonight is to review and take action, if so desired, regarding the resident nonprofit fee. And before I take any questions, I'd like to make a statement. I publicly apologize to the nonprofits at our Parks and Rec Commission meeting, and I'd like to do that again today and to City Council, that if we, if staff would have taken the time to reach out to them before we started this process, I think we wouldn't be here today. So that was a mistake by staff and I wanted to acknowledge the fact that we made a mistake, so, just wanted to say that. So, I'd be glad to take any questions now and...
Did the $325,000 in deferred maintenance come up at the Parks and Rec Commission meeting?
Yes, it did.
How, how do they, did they have any great silver bullets or golden bullets on how to, how to solve that?
No, they did not. What, the presentation you saw tonight is basically the presentation I gave that night.
Well, and I would add another project on unfunded maintenance, and that would be all of the walkways around, and the, they are a accident waiting to happen. I mean, the walkways up to the Littleton Center and the parking lot also fall under that unfunded maintenance. I mean, the tree has raised the parking lot so that, I mean, raised the walkway so that it really is unsafe and probably very difficult for, for people with, you know, anybody that might have, not be physically able. And the bathrooms there, I mean, the bathrooms are not ADA compliant, I, I know they fall under that. So I mean, I, I still think that there are some really significant issues with our facilities and how we're going to continue to move forward in having those facilities. And you've shown, I mean, we are the best deal in, in the area. I mean, I think our staff do a great job of cleaning, having it ready for the next event.
Has there been any discussion in, in pass-through fees for ticketed events such as, you know, they sell 500 tickets and the facility fee is 50 cents or a dollar a ticket, tacked right on, and it goes to the city, nonprofit says, cities, that's the city facility fee?
No, there has not been.
And there's actually, you know, I attend a lot of events outside of town. I attend a lot of theater, I, and lots of facilities. The Folsom College have what they refer to as their facility fee. There's the price of the ticket, and it might be $100, and then there's a $5, everybody, whether you're in the $30 seat or you're in the $100 seats, paying a $5 facility fee. I mean, in this case, we're talking a dollar or two. I mean, I know when I attend events at the, at our Littleton Center, if I had an extra fee that I knew was to pay for the facility and it was a dollar or two or, or whatever, I mean, that's, it's kind of a pass-through, it makes sense on being able to maintain the facilities. I don't want to take money out of the community, I, you know, but I believe that every time we waive all the fees on everything and that we bear all the costs and we just did it for $20,000 at the last vote, we are taking away money from every citizen in this community. I buy tickets to the events I want to support, the fundraisers I want to support. If I want to go to a crab feed, I buy my ticket to the crab feed. If there's an extra $2 tacked on for a facility fee, it's not going to change whether or not I go. Maybe I'll drink one glass less glass of wine, no, probably not. So it's just, I mean, I think there's ways that nonprofits could assist us in being able to meet some of the maintenance needs of the facility and not, and, not just the maintenance needs of the facility, not have money coming out of Parks and Rec, it comes from, that then is taken away from every youth, senior, and all of these other activities in the community every time money's taken out of the Parks and Rec budget to pay for the cost of these fundraising events. I think the events are great, but we have to figure, I think there's, needs to be some way, and I'm glad you reached out to the nonprofits, it needs to, and I didn't know there was a nonprofit coalition, that's news to me, that group didn't exist before, obviously. So there needs to be some way for nonprofits to assist us to ensure that the facilities are there in the future, that other programs are there for youth and seniors and the citizens of our community. I mean, it's not just the Littleton Center that we have issues with, but I don't see, I mean, even when I look at these applications for, for events, I don't see CSD waiving any fees for events when they come in to inspect for permits. When I look at those events, there's, and those budgets, there's CSD fees being paid. Every citizen, I mean, but for some reason, there seems to be a feeling in this community that we should give special status to organ, to those, to organizations, whether the organization only has 10 members or whether the organization has 500 members. I, I, I struggle with it.
It's...
That said, you know...
It's a difficult, it's a difficult one. I lived through not only helping create and get a Boys and Girls Club built in this town, but I also lived through having to make the decision and vote to tear it down. $325,000 in deferred maintenance, if we don't do something, it's the elephant in the room and we will end up tearing down Littleton Center. Then what are we going to have? You know, you have to look for the future when we, when we sit up here, and that's, and we're struck... have to look for the future when we, when we sit up here. And that's, and we're struggling with it, and you can obviously tell we are. But that's the job, you know, is we've got to look down the road to the future. And I'm not in any way, shape, or form saying we have to decide it tonight. Okay? But we shouldn't lose sight of it. Something's going to, we've got to look at it.
I would prefer you decided tonight. I don't know if I could take much of that.
Well, I, I think there needs to be, you know, additional dialogue with those parties that are interested. And I've had discussions with, with, with some of the representatives of the nonprofits, and, you know, they have indicated to me that if they knew that there was a dedicated amount of money to go towards improving the building, well, before you can get to improvement, you gotta, you gotta be able to maintain it. So I, I agree with what has been said here, that, you know, we need to address this in some fashion, because otherwise it is, it's a continuous drain on the Parks and Rec budget, and it does detract from what your primary mission is.
And...
Isn't building maintenance, it's, you know, providing park and recreational opportunities in the community.
And we do have a similar program in our, for our ten dollar per player fee program, where the local nonprofit youth sports organizations pay ten dollars a year per player. Five of that goes back to the, to fund for the Walker Park Artificial Turf. The other five goes into maintenance that the city wouldn't other, wouldn't normally do, you know, changing lights out, extra chalk, doing, you know, specific things to the sports field. So, I mean, we have done that. We can show that, you know, we can separate the funds and justify them and show in a report what we spend the money on. So, I mean, we, we do do that in another program.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Well, and I wrestle with this one quite a bit. I do, I'm one of those who does, do believe that section B or the, or option B for tonight is what we should be going with, but with that, the caveat that we should form some type of ad hoc committee where we sit down with members of the coalition and come up with exactly what we've been discussing up here, so that the problem is, is not pushed off, it's resolved.
No, it needs to be addressed, and...
It does.
Again, we're not going to solve it tonight, and I don't see, you know, any big changes in, in, and quite frankly, I'll, I'll be going along with what the recommendation was from the commission, because we don't have a solution that works for the community. And so I think that what we need to do is, is step back. Staff, you need to engage and look at, you know, maybe some of these ideas that were discussed earlier, and maybe there are others out there that the nonprofit members, memberships could, could develop as well. I think, I think that's the first step.
I, I go along with that and recommend...
Okay, we have some, we have some speaker sheets. Let's do public comment. We have no further questions for our, Armando?
You're off the hook for now.
Go check, go check your phone.
Richard Kaiser? Thank you. Carl Bonner? Honor?
He's come to the microphone.
Can you come to the microphone, or you just, you're not going to speak?
He's not good.
Do you want to speak?
You don't have to speak.
No, you don't want to? Hi, Carl. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Dealing with the nine thousand dollar shortage, there's, there's no way you can solve your problem with the nine thousand dollar shortage dissipation. It, the answer was, this should have gone, should have gone to the nonprofits before it ever came here, you know, even approached a vote. I think the ad hoc committee is fine. I think it'll probably come up with some better solutions. The, the thing you're doing now, saving the nine thousand dollars, you're kicking the can down the road. You got a problem. The problem is maintenance. The city is so far behind in maintenance on so many things, you can't catch up. You've got to learn to maintain first. The Boys and Girls Building, after it was built, in the area that went bad, there was a rust stain coming down the, the wall from the parapet for a long time. I mentioned it to a few people. Oscar Diddy said he had mentioned it to a few people. Nothing got done. There's nobody taking the blame, nobody being responsible for maintenance in some, in all respects. Maybe in some, but not in all. Let's not kick the can down the road again. Let's have the ad hoc committee. Let's get something resolved. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole Gregg?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So I'm here on behalf of Girl Scouts and, sorry. The last meeting, we kind of addressed things as far as like the fees of, and I appreciate Mayor Hewer for mentioning how we aren't a fundraising events. We do these for the girls, for them to earn their leadership boards and, and roles. So, when you guys are doing this vote, if you can take into consideration, we are not, we are truly nonprofit. We are not bringing in anything. Matter of fact, we had an event back on April sixth this year that we, myself, I was in charge of and had gone to Parks and Rec to get the building. We charged five dollars for that event for each girl. That included their, it was World Thinking Day. Each troop, they researched a country, they did all the information on it, made boards. We all went around. They had, you know, they had all their, their information there, and the girls got to learn about different countries. With that event, it did not end up costing that full amount. Therefore, we, rather than putting it into our general fund of council, or I'm sorry, service unit funds, we are refunded, we refunded back to the troops. On that same event, I had to jump through many, many hoops to even rent the facility. I went down there, and they allow us one, as the current contract says, they allow us one event per troop. Went down there with my Brownie troop's number to do, the girls have been in Girl Scouts for four years, and because we started a new troop and had not been established for two years, we could not rent the facility. So then I had to go to my other daughter's, my oldest daughter's troop, and use her troop number. And this all transpired within one trip to Parks and Rec, of the girl going back in the back, coming out to me about four different times. Because then she came back out, she said, "Well, I need proof that you guys are a troop in this town. I needed to say how long you've been established, where you meet," all this stuff. So I left there without a date planned, because we couldn't put anything on the books until we had that. Called our Sacramento council. Long story short, got the letter, submitted it in to them, confirmed with her. She said she didn't receive the letter that I sent via email, so I sent it back to her via email, got to the facility that Friday night, and doors were locked and lights were off. We called the after-hours number. They came, the gal let us in. She said, "I apologize. You guys were not on the schedule." There's a gymnastic mat that's covering half the floor. I can't do that because there was a physical disability, and that's fine, understood that. She said, "I will call the guys to come out and move that for you." About twenty minutes later, a gentleman came. I said, "Oh, are you here to move the mats?" He goes, "No, I don't do that." So during our event, we were only able to use half of the building. The other half had a big floor mat down on it. As we walked into the bathrooms, because we're Girl Scouts, you leave it cleaner than what you left it, but we always check it all out beforehand, we noticed there was restrooms and toilets that had not been flushed and feces were in there. I'm not sure from when. So, I mean, I guess I'm, I'm going forward asking that you guys continue to have the fee schedule for these that are truly nonprofits of not bringing in money and not raising money for these events. Keep it that way if possible. Also, the money, if you guys do decide to charge for those that are fundraisers coming in, that, as has said, been said before, that that money truly does go to maintenance, because had we paid six hundred dollars to come into this event and charged extra, you know, I just, I think, and we not checked the bathrooms, and somebody just walked in there. I've lived in Galt my whole life, all thirty-six years, and I would have been very embarrassed, you know, to have my facilities looking that way. But we just ask that you guys take that into consideration, that the truly not, I mean, I'm not saying that the other ones aren't true nonprofits, but I'm just saying we don't fundraise, as you had said, Mayor, that we don't fundraise for funds for ourselves. It's just for the girls to continue. Yes. So, that's all.
Thank you, Nicole. Not sure, Mr. Patel, Mickey?
Mayor, may I address a couple of those points, please?
Sure. After, when we finish public comment?
Okay.
Can we do it then?
Sure.
Hi, I'm the president of the Galt Sunrais Rotary, Mukesh Patel. So I just wanted to bring up a few points about our small club in town. We, our major event is the community dinner. We do it at the Littleton Center every year, and it attracts about a thousand to fifteen hundred people every year. It's a very big deal for all of us, and a lot of you attend it, and we really appreciate that. It just brings the whole community together. And we do a two or three major fundraisers every year. And I wanted to point out, the money that we distribute in the community itself, we give about ten thousand dollars out every year in this community to different organizations. We give it to, some of the organizations we have are Liberty Ranch. We give money out to Liberty Ranch. We give out to the Galt Heritage Festival. We've given money to, we give dictionaries to all the third graders in town, too. So that's a big project for us. We do, we give donations towards the senior lunch, and extravagance, we've given money towards that, 4-H, many, many other people we give money out to. So I just wanted to highlight some of the few things that we do. And our fundraisers, the one event, it wasn't highlighted up there. I don't know why it wasn't brought up over there, but we use the Littleton Center. And to pay six hundred dollars for that event, our group, we're not like the Girl Scouts. We can absorb that cost, but most of the, most of the other nonprofits, they can't absorb it. Just like she says, we do fundraising, they don't. So we can actually afford something like that, but they can't. So it's more towards groups like that. We're actually going out and helping Boy Scouts. We're helping Girl Scouts. So to have a fee of six hundred dollars to do an event where they're just doing a bake sale or something like that, they can't do that event. So, I don't, thank you very much.
Armando?
There, there is a policy in place that requires us to check the boxes. So when we do ask, one is that you have to be established in the city for, for one-year period. You have to be a nonprofit, and we do check all those records before we just rent out the facilities. I want to say I know about this, this specific incident, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. But I don't, if it was supposed to be rented that night, it would have been rental-ready. Obviously, we didn't believe that it was rented that night, so it was not rental-ready. Just wanted to make that point, that there are specific guidelines that we have to follow. And I, I know they seem like a lot of hoops and a lot of red tape, but those are policies that are placed by city council and that we must follow.
Further discussion? Any further public comment before we move on? Julie, go ahead.
I asked the same question at the Parks and Rec Commission meeting. I'm curious about the hundred and twenty thousand dollars that was spent on maintenance fees. Did you find out what fund that money came from?
Yeah, yes, I did. I was advised by Public Works that it did come out of '06.
It came out of '06, okay.
Yes.
So that you anticipate that the entire three hundred and twenty-five going forward will come from that fund and not from capital improvement?
Yes, that's what I was told by Public Works.
Hmm, interesting. Okay. I'll look into that. Thank you.
Yeah, maintenance funds are typically overhead, which is '06, not capital.
You know, following the last meeting, or when we discussed this, and, and, you know, I, I do think that we are going to solve it tonight. I, I think we can make a decision tonight regarding moving forward for the, for the time being. But, but I really do, you know, even, even youth groups, you know, I used to rent the Littleton Center regularly, you know, and I know it's twenty years ago, but twenty years ago, I paid three hundred dollars every time I had a Girl Scout event there. I just think that we've got to figure out a way as a community on how we're going to maintain these facilities. And when we take money, I think what everybody needs to remember, that yes, when this money comes from the Parks and Rec, comes from '06, the general fund is supplementing that '06 fund by about a million dollars a year. And I will still tell you, the maintenance of, you know, I mean, I want public safety, and I want the, you know, good parks. And as for events, people buy tickets to support those events. I do think that there's a way at some point that we need to figure out a way, and if it means to set up some sort of discussion about how we're going to maintain those facilities so that we have them moving forward, I think that's going to have to be done at some point. Okay, any further comment?
So just want to...
Go ahead.
Just want to say, this, this is something as a council that's dear to me, that we can do for the community. It's, it's nine thousand dollar line item. We can spend two thousand dollars on a speaker and have. So, just finding a way to give back. And all the money, like, some people raise money, but that money goes back in the community. Almost all of it goes right back in the community. It goes to our kids. Because that, we're, and we're also outgrowing our facilities, aren't we? So we might need to, let's build a bigger one. So, we, we've got a lot to think about, but with the coalition, maybe we can figure something out.
Go ahead.
So are we at a point where we can make a motion?
I'm about ready to.
I was going to say, I want to beat you to it. I move that we accept alternate B, but also with the caveat that we set up a ad hoc committee between the coalition and the city.
Yeah, would we have to bring, bring that back?
Just directing staff to meet with the, to meet with the nonprofits?
Well, that's...
I don't really want, I mean, I guess I hesitate to think about setting up another, you know, these ad hoc committees. Just directing staff to meet with the coalition to come up with alternatives?
Mayor, I kind of chime in on that. I, you know, if we're going to set up and meet with, you know, the nonprofits in the community, I'd like some specific direction from the council on, you know, what is our discussion, you know, where, where do we want to go with that? You know, I'm going to spend, I'm not up to nine thousand dollars, but I'm going to spend a lot of staff time and energy trying to, you know, work through this issue. You know, we've, you know, met and, and done, you know, a lot of good work in staff time, you know, trying to, you know, kind of figure out, you know, the components of, of which way to go on this. I think our time can be, you know, spent, you know, in a better way than trying to meet with, you know, the, you know, the nonprofit groups, you know. I recommend going with, you know, the option, what was it, B? Lost my chart up on the wall here. And, you know, let's, you know, revisit it, see how it goes, and revisit it next year.
I don't want to wait till next year.
Yeah, I, I agree with Kurt.
I, I, I think that, you know, you know, and maybe it, maybe it would take, you know, a representative, a representative of council. You know, I, I don't know that staff's going to negotiate. I think obviously we were, someone's going to have to go to staff to get some ideas. They're going to have to carry the ball. But if that's necessary, you know, maybe we should, maybe we should. Only because I think, you know, it's, it's, it has been a contentious issue, and, and I think it needs to be aired, and...
We should have the discussion.
We need to have some, some solutions.
Yes.
I, I would, I would go so far as to say, maybe benefit staff, say, we ought to have two to three meetings, ad hoc meetings, and see if that leads anywhere. And, you know, there was, there's some, some set staff time, time limit to it, before it comes back and say, "Okay, we actually made progress," or, "Do you know what? We're not getting anywhere."
Well, and I think it needs to have absolute criteria about what it is, because we form these ad hoc committees, and they go on and on and on, and then we never can stop them. And they get off topic, and they start doing things that had nothing to do with what the original...
And that's why I mentioned, you know, two, two to three meetings or something, no limit, and then bring it back, see if it's worth continuing or not.
An ad hoc, you know, committee's not on the agenda, so we need a direction from the council to bring that back at the next meeting, the forum, and we can, you know...
Okay, that my motion will say, I motion that we take alternative B, and during the end of the meeting, we will go ahead and request that be brought back. So motion is alternative B.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Okay, call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Malsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Hewer?
Aye. Motion passes, five-o vote. Okay, I've had a request for a five-minute break. I adjourned for five minutes. Okay.
It's gone, just like that. Because I like you that much, we're inclined for you. Okay.
Council's president called meeting to order. Cora, approval of the Galt Public Service Unit Memorandum of Understanding with Revised Salary Schedule, Unrepresented Employee Revised Salary Schedule, and Amendment to the City Manager and City Administrator Employment Agreements.
Actually, Mayor, I'm going to...
HR.
I'm going to kick this off if I can and then turn it over to Cora to kind of wrap it up here. I just wanted to start out and thank the Galt Public Service Unit, Rocky Allison and our HR, or, you know, Human Resource Director, Cora Hall, in kind of getting us to this point. Most importantly, I do want to thank the council for, I think, your direction and, and work on, you know, with staff. One of the things that we talk about quite a bit in, through our strategic plan process is, you know, what, what direction do we want to go with the city? What are our priorities? And in the last two years that I've been here, each time we look at our strategic plan, the employees come to the top of that list. And I know I'm out there talking to the, you know, the council, the community, you know, our staff all the time, you know, we, we do have some struggles with, you know, a lot of our, you know, defer maintenance of our buildings, vehicles, our IT, and I kind of have that list in mind that, you know, I talk about when I, I speak with the budget, you know, but one of the most important things on that list is our employees. And without good, you know, employees and keeping comparative and competitive within the market, you know, we're, we continue to, we will struggle with getting, you know, that, the good quality employee here, working for the city of Galt. And I think what's before you tonight is a true representation of the council, you know, you know, giving back to the employees, you know, within our negotiation agreements. The city did not ask for any takeaways. We are, you know, truly providing, you know, the employees, you know, bringing them up are within five percent of the median of our comparable cities, and we compare ourselves to about twelve cities, I believe.
Twelve cities.
As we, you know, kind of went through the process and the negotiating process. And so, you know, I think this is a, a great moment for our city council, and I applaud the city council, and I applaud the Galt GPSU, and I do thank Rocky Allison and Cora for getting us here.
Thank you, Jean, I appreciate it. I too want to thank the city council for all of your guidance through this process. We've had multiple meetings and you have provided a lot of guidance through this process, so I really appreciate it. I also want to say thank you to city manager and city attorney for all of their contributions through this, and also finance division, Emily Boyd and Matt Voring, for all of their financial analysis for this process. Also, I want to thank our labor advisor, Charlie Howard, for all of his knowledge and leadership through this process. And of course, last but not least, I would like to thank the GPSU negotiating team for all of their preparation, hard work, and collaboration which brought us to this agreement tonight. So I would like to go over just some of the brief highlights of the GPSU contract. The first item is regarding the term of the contract. The MOU will be effective for three and a half years from January first, two thousand eighteen, through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-one. The next item is regarding cost of living increases. Jean had mentioned that we had a salary survey. I feel like this is echoing, sorry. So effective January first, two thousand eighteen, the affected classifications will be brought up to five percent of the total compensation median listed in the city's two thousand seventeen salary survey. The affected classifications and the percentage of base pay that the affected classifications will receive is reflected in Exhibit A of the revised MOU. These salary increases are retroactive back to January first, two thousand eighteen. Effective July first, two thousand eighteen, all classifications of this MOU will receive a three percent increase to their base salary. And effective July first of two thousand nineteen and effective July first of two thousand twenty, all classifications will also receive a two point two five increase to base salary. The next item is regarding a medical waiver. The city will now offer two hundred dollars per month for employees to waive employee-only medical coverage. This is new for the city. Currently, the city only offers a medical waiver for employee plus one and employee plus family coverage. The next item is regarding the city's maximum contribution towards medical insurance premiums. After adoption of the MOU, the city's maximum contribution for medical will increase by two dollars and nineteen, nineteen cents for employee only, sixteen dollars and thirty-nine cents for employee plus one, and thirty-five dollars and thirty-one cents for employee plus family. The next item is regarding annual leave accruals. Effective upon adoption of the MOU, employees will receive an annual leave increase at an earlier year of service than they previously had, and employees will also now earn a maximum of two hundred and twenty hours of annual leave after twenty-two years of service. The next item is regarding life insurance. Effective January first, two thousand nineteen, the city will pay the premium for fifty thousand dollars in term life insurance, the premium was previously set at thirty-five thousand. The next item is regarding vacation buyback. Vacation buyback is also new for the city. The city will now allow employees to sell back up to forty hours of accrued and unused vacation. In order to be eligible for this, they must have used forty hours of vacation in that calendar year and also still have forty hours remaining in their bank. The next item is regarding compensatory time off, also known as CTO. CTO will increase from eighty hours to a hundred and twenty hours with the city reserving the right to cash out any portion of that CTO in excess of eighty hours with two weeks' advance notice. And employees will also now be able to cash out up to forty hours of that CTO one time per year. So those are the highlights of the GPSU MOU in regards to the unrepresented group, which consists of professional confidential, mid managers, managers, and appointed officials. This group is also proposed to receive the same changes that occurred in the PSU MOU. So staff is asking that the council adopt a resolution approving the Memorandum of Understanding with the Galt Public Service Unit for the period of January first, two thousand eighteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, with a revised salary schedule, authorizing city manager to execute the GPSU MOU, authorizing the revised salary schedules for the unrepresented positions effective January first, two thousand eighteen, and salary increases on July first of two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, and two thousand and twenty, and approving the amendments to the city manager and clerk-administrator employment agreements. So that concludes the highlights, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Okay, we have some public comment. Sean Farmer.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, citizens of council, members of council. My name is Sean Farmer, for those of you that don't know me. So I'm going to skip the part about the summary of what this is about because the lady just gave a pretty good summary of it. Basically, what this is, is the city got a study done last year that determined, based on thirteen cities, of what the median income for all the positions that we're talking about tonight should be making. And then based on that, they're proposing this MOU, which will cover everybody from department heads down through your mid-management, lower-level people in the city. It's a, it starts with a, bringing them up to five percent within the median, and it would also include a three percent raise on January first, or on July first of this year, and then subsequently a two and a quarter raise each July for the next two years. So I'm not going to stand here tonight and say that city employees don't need raises. But what I am going to say is this report is very skewed and it's very top-heavy. How can you sit and compare Galt to cities like Davis and El Grove and Folsom and West Sacramento and Lodi, just to name a few? El Grove, the thirty-first largest state in California, Galt, two hundred and fifty-sixth largest. Hundred thousand dollars a year median income for people that live in Folsom, median house price in Davis, six hundred thousand dollars. These are the cities that we are comparing to in this study. Now, I'm not sure if we can enact parts of this for certain mid-to-lower level, but this is very heavy on the top, and if you enact this across the board, as it is proposed now, it will mean double-digit raises for department heads, as much as twelve percent for particular members, and I'm not going to say names, nine percent for one, eight percent for another, ten percent for another. It'll actually end up being twenty percent over the next two years after it's all said and done. My concern also is not only this, after all that we've talked about tonight, with nine thousand dollars for nonprofits and how our Littleton Center needs three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars in maintenance, and we're just going to hand out thousands of dollars. We have, our finance director last week said herself, we have not even yet begun to prepare for the financial impact that we are going to be hit with CalPERS and retirements coming down the road. That will also be affected by what you guys decide tonight. So I, and the citizens of Galt, ask this. How can we discuss pay raises for our upper management when we have not even agreed with pay for our police officers yet? It's been dragging on for months. How can we discuss eliminating fee waivers for nonprofits because we're in some sort of deficit in a fund, by the way, is always in deficit? That's the nature of the '06 fund, it always is subsidized. There's no such thing as a deficit in that fund. Or how about when our parks and recreation facilities, like we've just discussed, are in need of over two and a half million dollars in repairs that Mr. Solis gave a presentation on weeks ago? The citizens of Galt are having a hard time even hearing such a discussion right now, especially when the memory of wastewater and water rate increases are still fresh in our minds. Do you think that any of those folks, do you think anybody in Galt got a double-digit raise when we increased their water rates? My dad's water rate went up fifty dollars. He's on fixed income. His cost of living increase for social security was two dollars. Two dollars. You guys are talking about giving out two hundred for, to, to start with, help with health insurance, or giving out, you know, upping the life insurance policy. These people don't get these kind of raises. What's going on here is you guys are saying to the community that giving out raises is more important than fixed-income people having to pay increases. You are saying it's more important than businesses that are carrying the brunt. I had business owners speak at the presentation, talking about his water's going to go up exponentially, and he was going to worry about staying a business. He's not getting kind of, any kind of raise. You guys said, oh, well, state of California mandated, we just got to hand it down. And that's true. But you know what? Don't sit there and say, well, there's nothing we can do, and then turn around at this meeting and say, well, we're going to hand out just a whole bunch of raises. Our, our city employees at the top end make very good money for the city. And you know what? I'm not going to make any friends tonight with this, I can tell you. There's going to be a lot of upset people up there, and you know, it is what it is. But I just can't stand by and, and just not say anything about this. I was at a Parks and Rec meeting the other night. One of the commissioners asked if we could get some nets replaced. They said, oh, we'll have to look at the budget and see if we can find it. It was like a hundred dollars worth of nets. We can't even come up with a hundred dollars worth of nets, but we can talk about doing this.
Mr. Farmer, you'll have to wrap it up, you have ten seconds.
So remember this, you have a duty to take care of the people of Galt, those who have elected you. The impact, the decision you make tonight on this is going to affect this community forever. Do not tell the people of Galt that the needs of a few...
Your time is up.
...are bigger than the many.
Cammy Martin.
I'm here because I'm care, because I care. I'm not here, I'm not paid to be here, none of this audience is. I don't get paid to pull the agenda, to post the documents for each meeting, to research their background, which, by the way, given the current state of our city website, is no small feat. I spoke before all of you one month ago and was able to educate and inform you on transparency. It has been encouraging to hear you so much, with so much frequency at the last meeting. This gives us confirmation that we are not continuing to water rocks and that the council is, in fact, not only listening, but hearing us. When I came here last month, they also spoke about raises for our police officers and how they still didn't have a contract. Well, you all know it's a month later and they still don't have one, yet here we all are, all of our managers and administrators asking for theirs. But, well, it's thrown in with the regular employees, so how do you say no to that, right? Perhaps in the future, they should be broken out, managers, admin, separated from direct reports, I don't know, just a thought. Is because that guy two cities over got a raise, is that really a reason? What happened to merit? And I'm not saying that there isn't merit, because clearly I'm not privy to the inner workings of city or personnel, HR information. However, I wonder, you get hired with the city and raises, are they just handed out and not earned? Is that how it works? The concept of being handed something without having to earn it is foreign to me, hence my confusion. Back on track. The same people sitting around this chamber and in the offices here, who received a raise last year and the year before, are back and asking for raises again. You know who hasn't received a raise in almost two years? Our Galt police officers. It's now May fifteenth. They haven't received a raise since July of two thousand sixteen. But here you all are with your hands out again, while we all sat and quabbled with the nonprofits over not nine thousand dollars, but eighty-four hundred, because there were fourteen nonprofit events on that list, multiplied by six hundred dollars equals eighty-four hundred. Our city and police department should collaborate to do three things, the first being priority and the latter two in no particular order. One, retain the highly qualified, experienced officers we currently have. Two, attract and hire laterals. And three, select and hire quality recruits. The city, being our city manager and council, need to make it a priority to get the chief and police department what they need to make this happen. Retention is a necessity and this revolving door, it needs to stop. You have to give the chief some tools for his toolkit, and you are doing nothing but setting him up to fail, and that's completely unfair. In this case, the tool he needs is money, period. Our police officers fight for us, literally, and I'm here to fight for them figuratively. They go home to their families bruised and broken for us, to keep us safe. They want to live and work here. They don't want to leave, don't make them. Pay them what they're worth, pay them to stay. Pay good ones to want to come here. Other departments are giving up bonuses to live in the city limits. Cash sign-on bonuses just to come work for them. We can't afford that. But we can do right by those that we have and those we hire. So when you go, so when you and they go back into negotiations, please keep in mind that we're not just looking at the lowest number possible. We're looking at three years out. We're looking at who we want to live next door to us and down the street, who we want on our kids' baseball team and coaching their soccer team. This is our city and our community, and we have police officers who can't, can't afford to work here. That's heartbreaking to me. This is their calling. They do it because they love the job and they love each other. They want to stay together. Mayor Huer got it right when she said that our number one priority is safe streets and safe parks. Who keeps them safe? It's our police officers. For those of you who may not know, this week is National Police Week, with events taking place throughout our country and ultimately culminating in Washington, DC. And as today is National Peace Officers, officers, gosh, sorry, as today is National Peace Officers Memorial Day, I would like for us to please take a moment and bow our heads in silence to honor those who have died in the line of duty. Thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Chair members. My name is Rocky Allison. I am currently the president of the GPSU. I am here tonight on behalf of myself and members of the GPSU to express our gratitude. Negotiations have been tough one, filled with full, full range of emotions, from feeling left out, unappreciated, to grateful, to very happy. But we dredged through all that and came to an agreement that I was happy to sign. If I may quote some of my members at this time, I've heard both ends, this is a terrible agreement that we're looking at, and I've also heard this is the best one we've seen in many years. Again, on behalf of me and my members, thank you for your patience and generosity. Thank you.
Cora, can you explain about the, the...
Cora, can you explain about the, answer some of the questions, particularly regarding, a couple of questions I'd like you to answer, about the cities, the comparison cities, and how we arrive at those comparison cities and the process to, for those comparison cities? Pardon?
The reason for, sorry.
The reason, yeah.
It did conspire before I got here, but typically, the way that it works is we, the city contracted with Coffin Associates. Basically, they take a look at the comparator cities being in proximity to Galt being our competitors. So, from what I understand, that is who we ended up with, is who they recommended, and it was also taken to the groups to be voted on. So, it wasn't like the city just agreed to this.
It's a negotiated item.
Correct.
That we negotiate with all of the bargaining units regarding, correct?
Correct.
So, those items, so those aren't always picked because of the, I mean, there were lots of comparisons that went in, and I can tell you that, you know, Elk Grove, there was lots of questions about Elk Grove being compared in those, and that was a negotiated item. So, many of those things are, so just to know that the, those cities that are picked are picked based on negotiations.
Yes, I should say, it's not based on negotiations, but it is more of a meet-can-fur process. So, they did, from what I understand, the city representatives at the time met with different groups, and that's how the conclusion came to who the comparator cities would be.
The other questions?
No, it was a process that was undertaken for all employee groups, and one of the main concerns was its proximity. Competition with those cities for quality employees. And in order to do that, you know, this council looked at what would be a reasonable number in terms of establishing what the mean was, and that's for total compensation, not necessarily salaries.
Correct.
A lot of times, there's some confusion there. People just look at salary and don't take into consideration things such as the city of Galt does pay social security. Most of the city, surrounding cities, do not. So, there is an additional cost and an additional benefit to that employee that works in the city of Galt. So, it's, and it is difficult to, when you compare cities, to get apples and apples, but through the total compensation process, I think it is the most meaningful and accurate. And that is what was agreed upon, so.
Would you also explain regarding the median? What that means, or maybe Emily, that we take those and, that we're taking total comp?
So, basically, the figures that we looked at were the total compensation median. So, basically, it included all of the base pay, the incentives, medical contributions, anything that was contributed to be considered as like a total compensation package for an employee. We use the median, which is basically the middle number because it's the most fair.
So, we don't take the high and we don't take the low. We try to put ourselves in the middle.
Correct. So, when you're looking at an average, it's possible to have outliers within there that could skew the figures either way. So, typically, the most, I guess, fair way to look at it would be to take the median.
And we had a study done about total compensation and a study done on salaries. And we spent actually, I can't remember how much, but to have that done, and one of the statements from employees during the time of having that done was that the city's done it before and that they never did anything, that they never looked at the data and never did anything to try to rectify the situation of employees who were, who were underpaid for their job duties or, and so, in doing that, we took that study and have tried to look at, and that's one of the raises that the employees, the raise employees are getting back retro to January 1st, isn't all employees. It's only those employees who were found to have their pay significantly less than 5% within the 5% of the median.
That's what I wanted to point out, is this total compensation was by position. It wasn't by employee group, correct?
Correct.
Comments? Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
I would motion to approve the MOU for the Public Service Unit through June 30th, 2001. Authorize city manager execute the GPSU MOU, approving revised salary schedules for unrepresented positions effective January 1, 18, and salaries, salary increases to July 1, 18, 19, and 20. Approving the amendments to the city manager and city administrator employment agreements.
And I'll second it with the comment that, how long have we been in negotiations on this?
We started negotiating the end of August of 17.
I was going to say, last year.
Yeah, since last summer. So, it's been a long process. It's not a knee-jerk reaction here, trust me. Anyhow, with that, I'm seconding it, seconding the motion.
I have a motion, this, I have a motion by Councilmember Campion, seconded by Councilmember Molsen. Any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Molsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Huer?
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0 vote. Public Works Department, consideration of alternatives for revising the Fourth Street parking lot and open space plan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Chung Trinh, our senior engineer for the Public Works Department, will be presenting this item.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, member of the council. Tonight, I'm making a presentation on the alternatives for the Fourth Street Parking Lot Open Space Plan. The original concept, master plan of the Fourth Street Parking Lot Open Space was developed 10 years ago in 2008. The original concept had parking essentially on Fourth Street and C Street, up to the Union Specific Railroad property line, and south of that, there's a open space slash parking lot. A number of things have changed since the original design was conceptualized 10 years ago. We lost redevelopment funding. Let me step back a bit. So, we had the C Street Complete Street project developed at the same time, and the Fourth Street open space area was incorporated into that project due to loss of redevelopment agency funding and actually bids that came in higher than expected. We actually ended up cutting that project quite substantially. So, we ended up only doing a section of that project, just the Fourth Street section. During that time, also, we talked with UPRR regarding the original plans, and they commented on the original plan, asking us to, whatever facilities we put in in the future, to keep it away from the UPRR train and away from the fence for safety reasons. So, with those reasons, last year, we completed the C Street Complete Street, essentially the Fourth Street project. And as we were completing the project, we discussed with SHRA, there was funding available, and I think SHRA provided about $65,000 for the parking, the Fourth Street Parking Lot Open Space area. We were able to install the parking lot right there on Fourth and C Street. There's 18 parking spots there. And as we finished out the project, we continued to communicate with SHRA, and they told us recently that there's additional $400,000 available to complete out the, as much as possible, the remaining part of the Fourth Street Park and Open Space. We wanted to note that there's no additional other funding that's designated for this So, with that, staff recently came up with three options for your consideration. The first option, there's an entrance at E Street, two-way traffic, perpendicular parking. There would be trees and landscaping to cover up the railroad fence to beautify that area. There'd be bark and mulch, a decomposed granite path as a maintenance path, and they're, and so, these plants here, conceptually, would be drought-tolerant plants. Option two is similar to option one, but the only difference is, is that there's one-way traffic and there's diagonal parking with these trailer, long trailer parking stalls. We wanted to provide, option three here, for your, for your knowledge that we, had we known about the funding earlier, I think we would have reconsidered doing some of the work that we've recently did on E Street. We wanted to provide this option to show that there is an option to enter from F Street, not touch any of the new improvements that we recently installed. So, with the three options, we had a staff meeting, and we carried out these options and had a meeting with the Historical Preservation Advisory Committee. All of the committee members favored option one and two. They liked the wide path of option one, and they liked the diagonal parking and the stall, the long stalls of option two. Additionally, they requested commemorative plaques to be installed with this project to commemorate the original train station and the cattle stockyard. And last Thursday, we met with the Planning Commission, and two out of the three planning commissioners favored option one and two, and one member favored option three for the total amount of parking spaces that was provided. And so, with that, I'll hand this bullet over to Steve.
And that brings us to tonight, and I just, these are conceptual options on a revised master plan for completion of the open space on the east side of the railroad tracks. We don't have funding to do all of any of those plans. We would have to phase, whatever option is ultimately selected, we will have to phase that and look for future-year annual funding opportunities, whether it be through CDBG or other program sources. So, in giving us a master plan direction, we can then optimize to encumber in a timely manner the available funding that will be lost if we cannot deliver a construction project within this fiscal year. That gives us about six weeks to take whatever direction we get tonight and get a final plan and set of specifications put together and out to bid. That is not very much time, and it takes another month and a half to two months to get a project advertised and awarded. That's putting us in the fall, and if we're going to get it constructed before the end of the year, we got to do it before it starts raining. So, it's a very tight timeframe. These are, again, conceptual options. There are many other options, and there are hybrid options. You know, you could, we're basically giving you options for diagonal parking or perpendicular parking, options for where we would enter. If we, both options one and two would have an F Street entrance to a new expanded parking lot, it's part of the master plan. The community is aware, we've got some dying, dying palm trees out there that are going to be removed. They actually are located where the new entrance would go. There are two healthy palm trees that were also installed, would have to be relocated. So, we needed some early guidance on, before we moved that, we've actually negotiated a settlement with the original contractor on those dying trees to help us do some of that relocation and irrigation work to offset the loss of the trees.
Weren't the trees covered by warranty?
They essentially have a, they are covered by a plant establishment period, and so, we've worked with them to actually negotiate the removal of the dead trees and relocation of the live trees and the irrigation systems to accommodate this future driveway, if that is the direction that's given. If we get different direction tonight, then we would have to look at a different course of action. So, those are sort of where we're at. We're looking, basically, staff are preferred either option one or option two. Option three with the, or option one shows, shows an entrance off C Street. That's probably going to be problematic, too close to the railroad. We've got a median in there as part of the quiet zone. So, that, that portion of the concept probably isn't workable. The perpendicular parking shown in option one, and again, in option three, actually provide more flexibility if and when there are events that involve street closures, because you could circulate back out the entry you came in versus diagonal parking is pretty much one way in and one way out. And then, if there is an event where we do a road closure, such as extravaganza this past spring, really, we lose a lot, we lose the use of the parking lots because there's no way in or out once you have the road closure in place. So, there are hybrid options here, where we can, you know, like the D Street and E Street entrances, and we could continue with the diagonal parking on the north end, and we could go with perpendicular on the south end, which would give people a way back out if we had a one-block closure in there. So, we're open to that kind of direction and feedback on a preferred option or a hybrid option. And with that, we'd look for any, answer any questions you might have or direction that you might be willing to give us so that we can try to deliver this project before the funding slips through our fingers here.
So, were there only three planning commissioners that voted?
Four.
Four. It looks like-
There were only three planning commissioners at this meeting.
And they all three picked something different?
Correct.
Okay.
Great.
Are you waiting for feedback?
Can I, can I add about the funding? So, SHRA is $400,000, and it's very unlikely that we will be able to complete this full project as is. The funding as provided would only, rough estimate, install, be able to install about 50, 60, maybe 70%. We'll never know until we get the exact bid in, but we're looking for a direction on the essentially master plan. We'll do what we can with the funding that we have for this, for this year and in the future. With available funding, we will finish it out with whatever master plan that we choose.
Do you have a parking lot count? A parking stall count?
The, the first one, the first one, I believe, is 80. The second one is about 60, I think it's 62. There's a, there's a count on there.
Too small to read.
A count read it.
Yeah. And the last one is 113, I believe.
Kurt, you had a question I don't think we answered.
I didn't, yeah, I didn't really have a question. Well, I do have a question. Under option one, where it, it looks like there's a driveway entrance out onto Fourth Street at the, at the north end, is that correct?
Correct.
So, that is a conceptual option, that we don't think that's probably practical from a traffic engineering standpoint, and UPRR may actually nix that option.
Okay. And also, what about, I mean, the entrance right, or the entrance exit right next to the railroad tracks, does, that appears to be, you don't see an issue with that?
We do see an issue with that.
I like, I personally like option one. And the only thing I would maybe consider is adding, conceptually, additional parking towards the exit at E Street. You know, I can't really tell, it doesn't look like there's parking all the way down to the exit. It looks like there's a bunch of landscaping, but I would prefer to maybe just move the landscaping back and pick up the parking spaces at least down to E Street. But I prefer option one.
I just wanted, the reason why there's actually that curve in there is because of the landscape, there's a power pole there, there's a guide wire there. And so, you know, again, this is all conceptual, and we'll look into it, you know, timing is an issue with this project, but that's why it-
Would you be basically working north of the existing parking lot at this point? Or where do you plan on, where would you start work?
It would be south, or either adding to the existing parking lot and then working our way south with, as far as the money would, would let us go.
So, in option two, you'd have to do something with the power pole, right?
Correct. Both option one and two, you would have to do some, actually, even option three, we would have to be doing something with, with the power pole. Now, we will be trying to coordinate and see if we can get, work around that, but this is, again, very preliminary as the funding became available. So, we would do as much as we can to facilitate that area so traffic flows as best as possible.
The more pavement we do with the next phase, the less landscaping you'll get. The more landscaping we do, the less money there'll be, and that's why it's going to have to get phased, and we typically enjoy a little bit of council confidence in our ability to try to find the right balance and bring back. You will be presented with a final recommendation as we would recommend going out to bid on the project, and we'll probably bring some, an informational item back as to what the, sort of, the initial phase design or what we can do. We'll probably put it out with bid alternates, try to get as much project as we can within the funding that become, is available based on bid prices. So, we're going to try to be creative to deliver as much project within the available funding as we can. as we can, but we're kind of at the crux of we can't finish our design until we pick, sort of pick a direction here. So this feedback is very helpful.
I have a question about the section just to the south of E Street. I think, I'm not sure, is it what you were touching on Kurt? That open space there that you've got white up in the brown area, is that not possibly used for parking?
Option?
Yeah, that's. Further south of E Street you're talking about?
Right.
So none of these options are mutually exclusive going forward? As money and funding becomes available, we can do, do further work?
The problem with option three is, as, as was said, you've got an entrance and an exit too close to the railroad crossing. So if we can do a hybrid to that effect and make, put more parking over that area but leave option one, I'd be all for that idea. Again, removing that old exit and entrance on C Street.
And we don't have money to do that.
And we've, I've had a similar analysis at a staff level the last week as we were looking at these conceptual options that that probably is not workable to enter onto C Street. Have to be a right in, right out. And if you've got a road closure, that just isn't going to work.
I don't think U P will buy into that one.
No.
So you're looking at the entrance being D and E Street. Entrances will be on D and E because the other ones probably aren't, in the picture aren't feasible.
There goes Mark.
And then someday in the future, possibly on F Street.
Just to clarify, the current existing facility right now, we actually do have a parking area right there and it's essentially here and there, this, we do have this entrance and we do have this entrance here.
Is that, is that the right location of the entrance?
Yes.
Yes, it doesn't show very well, but it's, it's a diagonal, so it's, you come in at D and you exit near C.
I like one because the parking is straight and so you can go out either way. I like that option because you do kind of get stuck in there in that one-way thing now. Minus the train entrance.
I actually kind of like option two because of the longer parking, people with trailers, new trucks, all those kinds of things. It gives people a place to park that's outside of, because we really don't have parking on our street. If someone were to visit us that had some sort of RV or trailer situation, so at least it has some of the pull-through kind of parking, correct? I mean, that's, I'm reading this right, right? That's what those long spaces are?
We can combine one and two.
It's diagonal.
That's what it looks like to me.
Well, I like, I mean, one or two is fine, but I do like the fact that we would have some parking for people with trailers. We oftentimes, you know, they hold vendor fairs down there, people have trailers that they're carrying their stuff in.
What I'm, yeah. What I'm hearing is we're leaning toward a combination of one and two. You can't have an entrance on, you know, an exit on C Street. I just don't see that happening. I do like to have large diagonals on option two, but you, you lose the parking space with the diagonals. They don't all have to be diagonals, right?
No, we can do a hybrid.
You can do a hybrid, yeah. So if you kind of combine those two options, I, I think that's what we're talking about.
I don't.
So today, it, it's not as large a problem with the, with trucks or trailers because we have some overflow and gravelled area. But once we start landscaping and putting drainage swales into a, for all the additional drainage, we will lose that opportunity. So, you know, there is some validity to, so then where do we park folks with trailers downtown?
Well, the trailers would be used for special events. I mean, I don't know, you're, I don't know this, this would truly be a pull-through, is it? Is there sufficient room without clipping the cars parked next to you? I mean, it's kind of hard to tell on this diagonal.
So those are the questions that we would definitely dive into. Option one, there's two-way traffic.
Yeah.
And you, you notice that it's, you would have to relook at the entrances because there's, you know, option two is essentially one-way and that wouldn't work with option one. So we'd have to kind of marry the two. But I think from what I'm hearing, there's a lot of good points that you guys like either option one. There's like a marriage of, of, of option one and two that we had the consultant take a look at.
I don't like the number of parking space losses. I mean, you go from option one, which is 80, to 62 in option two.
So if you made them straight, would you gain more? Except for the diagonals, trailer diagonals?
Option two's all diagonal.
Right, but if you could straighten those parking spots out, leave those diagonals straight.
So the mixed blessing with going to perpendicular is yes, you get more spaces per linear foot of parking lot, but you need a much wider lot because you now need a two-way aisle in between and people are backing out perpendicular. So you, you spend a lot of money on extra pavement.
Okay.
To get those extra parking spaces. But at the end of the day, if the challenge is having enough parking, it's an incremental cost for the pavement.
All right. We have like 13 spots there now or something like that?
Yeah, it was very interim.
13.
18.
But then we have all the street parking. I mean, it's not the only parking we have. Okay, so I don't know. Guess we really haven't given you any direction.
Actually, I think we've got enough feedback that we can come up with some working concepts that we, like I say, we need to kind of go into, into full speed design mode with our consultant and maybe come back with some alternates as we move forward. But I think we've got, what I'm hearing is a hybrid, trying to maximize parking, maybe having some trailer parking and, you know, having the exits remain on Fourth Street.
I like that idea totally, but is there any way, since we are going to be doing this in phases from what I'm understanding, kind of put a priority on the fact that there's some serious leveling issues out there, especially when we have heavy rains? I don't know why or who or what was done out there, but when you get a heavy rain out there, you actually have a lake. And if you're going to be doing it in phases, it could destroy your whole project.
We, we understand that and the, sort of the gray-brown wandering line is a drainage swale that would go into a positive storm rain system. Clearly, any phase you build, you'd have to get enough drainage to serve that phase. And then as you do a phase next, you'd have to expand that.
That's what they thought about the project that's out there now and that's why we have the lake. That's why I was asking that.
Well, the project that we put out there now is very much an interim phase with an overflow area that didn't have any money for drainage. So we, we graded it to drain away from the pavement and created a small lake for a few months and get us some parking the rest of the year. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So you got what you needed?
Let's get it done before, let's not lose the 400,000, 400,000, okay?
Yes.
We mess around, we will. Okay. City Clerk's report, consideration of appointment of representation to the city-created committees, commissions and boards. Donna?
Okay. On the agenda, we actually have two appointments. One is for a planning commissioner, that is, city council member Campion's appointment. His previous appointment, Doug Cannell, resigned on December 20th, or excuse me, resigned on March 16th, 2008. We received four applications, which are included in the agenda report. Councilmember Campion, it's your appointment.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, we did. We received the four applicants. I interviewed and talked with all four of them. Obviously, I think any one of them could do the job. The, the individual, and when I spoke with them, I told them that, you know, I would be getting back to them and let them know what my decision was. The individual I did go with and selected is Keith Jones. Keith has a unique background in construction and construction management. That's what his bachelor's degree is in, is in construction management. He's worked in heavy industry or heavy, heavy equipment, both public and private side. I think that's a perspective that the commission has not experienced and I think he will be very beneficial. I don't know if he wants to say anything or, but that's who I recommend it.
Okay, great. Okay. So can I ask you a question?
Sure.
It's come up, people have asked personally and can, he sounds fabulous, he's got a lot of experience. Can you explain how it's not a conflict of interest because George Reed does a lot of work in the community? How a planning commission does not award?
Well, I'd be, it's very sim, well, I was just going to say it's similar to, similar to commissioners that are on there now. We have at least one, I think Mark's appointment, Leanne's in real estate. There have been times where she's had a potential conflict, maybe not even real, and you recuse yourself. So it's, it's the same thing that the city council would have to do on projects which are in proximity to your house or property or a business that you're involved with. So it's, there are rules and regulations and laws that cover that. I'll let the city attorney explain.
There are conflict of interest laws and usually the Political Reform Act and Government Code, Section 1090 and all the various conflict laws are determined based on the decision before the body. So of course, we'd want to be aware. And the Form 700, that's the reason it's filed so we know what the potential conflicts are. So when issues come before the planning commission, we can evaluate whether there's a potential conflict. But it's not unusual to have individuals, whether on a city council or a planning commission or other bodies that, their own businesses in areas that may come before the council or the planning commission and potential conflicts that we'd evaluate on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you.
You know, when I was on planning commission and when I was on city council last, I had conflicts a number of times. And, you know, the smart thing to do is talk to this attorney beforehand.
Yes, please.
So, thank you, Mr. Jones. Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, the next appointment is Mayor Huers, Public Safety Committee. City Clerk's office received the resignation of Dave Dollgren on April 2nd, 2018. We received two applications, one from Sherri Daly, one from Jim Conick. This appointment is Mayor Huers.
And I appoint Jim Conick. Pardon? I told, I talked to him earlier today. I told him it wasn't necessary to come unless he.
He was here, though.
But he, he knows he was, I talked to him this morning. He knows he's being appointed. But I would like to add some, some comments about this and we have some council members that serve on safety committee, correct? Public Safety Committee?
Looking at me?
Yeah. Just, I'd really like to ensure that, that, you know, I think it's really important that appointees, that citizens, when they're serving on these committees, feel safe and that they're heard. Mr. Dollgren, you know, conveyed some concerns to me about, he has served on it for, you know, over three and a half years and he thinks things have changed and he just felt like it just didn't feel safe for him anymore. So I'd really encourage the council members there to make sure that, that all of our representatives are respected and treated kindly and, and listened to. So that said and done. Also, I spoke with Ms. Daly. She had applied for the safety, the Public Safety Committee because she had started a, a commission and had been working with the police department regarding homelessness because she had heard a lot of concerns from the community regarding, regarding the issue of the homeless in our community. Her and Ms. Keegy, who also had, who serves on Parks and Rec Commission, they kind of put this together and, you know, actually got a lot of public input and did a lot of research. So I'd really like to see the Public Safety Committee invite them to come and share that data with them. That was the main reason that Ms. Daly wanted to serve on the Public Safety Committee was she really wanted, she really, after they collected the data, after they had got a lot of community input and had some meetings, they really felt like the issue would have been dealt, been dealt with better, maybe through the Public Safety Committee, so.
What do we call the committee? I'm writing it down.
Pardon?
I'm writing it down. What do we call the committee? What do you call the committee? That you're asking us?
Nothing to write down. It's okay.
I'll remind myself to invite them.
So, so she, it was just a commission on homelessness. She just had gathered a group. So actually, I attended a couple of meetings. They were really well-attended by a lot of members of the community, pretty diverse. And I really think that that information that they gathered and that research they did shouldn't be lost. And so I really would encourage the Public Safety Committee to invite Ms. Daly and Ms. Keegy to come to a meeting and talk about the homeless issue and some of the issues that they, and some of the research that they had found. But Jim was happy to serve. Okay. Measure R Independent Citizens Oversight Committee appointments. This appointment, Donna, go ahead.
This is to review the application and consider an appointment to the vacant position on the Measure R Independent Citizens Oversight Committee. Kelly Keegy and James Claussen were appointed in 2015 and their terms ended in April 2018. Either person has chosen to reapply for the appointment. We advertised for the Measure R to open position. So far, we've only received one application, which is included in the agenda packet. This is an appointment made by the entire city council, so it'll be an action item.
I make a motion to appoint Kami Martin.
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Mollson.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Huers.
Aye. Are we going to re-advertise for that?
Yes. Continue.
It's okay, nothing.
Weird end of the season, isn't it? That it's not during November or December.
It's because when it took place and because they're three-year appointments.
Okay. Thank you.
Comments by staff? Mr. Winkler.
Thank you. Just one comment, reporting that for the month of April, that we achieved a 33% water conservation number, even though it was less rainy than it was the month prior. And we need to keep up the good work. We're going into a, projected to be a warm summer and we've got to continue to make progress in that. We will be doing a newsletter article on water conservation and reminding folks what their watering days are. We're recruiting, as we speak, for a water conservation officer to help us during the summer. So we're going to try to keep focused on the right things for water conservation.
Okay. Chris?
Just real quick, I'd like to congratulate Keith Jones on his appointment at planning commission and we welcome him to the team and look forward to working with him.
Emily?
Just one thing this evening. I'd just like to let the council know that the interim fieldwork by the new independent auditors has begun this week. They're working on the interim work on the fiscal 1718 audit, getting prepared, getting all of the foundational information that they need to audit the city.
Chief?
Just a couple of updates. Our recruitment team on May 14th, which is, was Officer Hammack, Officer Little and Officer Barton, attended Delta College Academy to look for new recruits. Today, they went to the College of the Redwoods, which was Officer Little and Officer Barton. So we continue our efforts on their, on recruitment and trying to recruit from the academies of people that are already attending also. Tomorrow, I'm spending the day at the Capitol, speaking to our legislators on current and past bills and those that are being proposed that affect public safety. I'll be able to report back on that, those meetings. I'm meeting with Cal Gianni and Cooper both tomorrow. And then today is, as mentioned earlier, today is National Peace Officer Memorial Day. So flags have been flown at half-staff and we do have staff that sent them, that are back in Washington DC for the memorial. So through our social media, we've been trying to do some updates to let the public know what's, what's going on with that, with this week and then what's going on in Washington DC with our staff.
Thank you. Cora?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Armando?
I do, I actually have two events that I'd like to remind council and the citizens of. First is our Chair on the Amgen Tour event, which will be held at the Walmart parking lot. It'll be from 2:00 to 4:00. There will be a free drawing for two kids' bikes, one boy's bike and one girl's bike. This is something that Jackie's been working on and has gotten the donation from Walmart, has a couple of other businesses coming in to support the event. And the Horizon Bicycle Club will be biking up from Lodi and be there along with Caltrans unit, talking about bike safety. So that's the first event. That's actually on, sorry, can you go back real quick? Apologize. That's actually this Thursday, May 17th. And the event is from 2:00 to 4:00, but the riders are anticipated on being in town between 3:00 PM and 3:10 PM. So if you guys want to get.
Say 3:00 and 3:05, yeah.
So they're, they're really accurate on their time and when they plan on being through. So if you guys make it out there, we'd love to see you.
Don't blink.
Are you barbecuing?
I'm going to invite you over to a barbecue at Parks and Recreation. I'll personally cook for you.
I'll bring you to July.
All right. The next event, please, is our, our Touch a Truck event with, in combination with the Chambers Food Truck Event. We will have, that'll be on Saturday, June 2nd, from 4:00 to 8:00. We'll have some city vehicles out there, dump trucks, police cars, lawn mowers. We'll also have a, Cal Waste, we'll have a waste truck out there. We're trying to get a bus, a school bus out there. And Mayor Hewer, I believe you will be providing some hats for the first 200 kids.
First 200 kids.
We'll get a construction hat with the city logo on it. And then, so I hope to see everybody out there.
And kids actually get to get up and.
They actually get to, it's actually Touch a Truck event. You don't. It's not like, stay off of there. No, it's jump in there and have a good time.
That really looks like fun.
Yeah.
An event that we've been working on for a while, make it happen. I'm glad to see it happening. Okay, oh.
I have nothing further, thank you.
This staff's busily working on budget, and June 5th is our target to, you know, bring the budget to the council. We should have some documents out to you by the end of next week. Start taking a look at it and, you know, asking myself and definitely staff questions. And so, it'll be, you know, a good, I think, a good meeting. We're mainly focused on the budget for that meeting. If nothing else to add.
Kurt?
Nothing.
Paige?
I'm done.
Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Winkler, for the air conditioning tonight.
No, I hear it's cold.
Clark?
Bear with me here. I got two different ones. I think I'll do the easy one first. There was a request to extend the Historical Society's funding from last year's community funding grant. I'd like to bring that forward at the next council meeting so it can be voted upon. And also, bring back the idea of the ad hoc committee for the purposes of reaching agreement between the city and nonprofits.
Okay. I had something. I just draw a blank. Something else I wanted to, I brought back. Oh, well, okay, I've drawn a blank, so it'll have to come back later. Okay. Anything else?